We are live.
All right, excellent. We may begin.
Great. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the April 27th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting of the Math Acton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
Hello, my name is Christa Balsor. I'm a fourth grade at Eagleville Elementary School. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, my name is Claire Kwan. I'm in fourth grade at Eagleville Elementary School. I would like to tell you why I like Eagleville. First, the teachers. The teachers that I had were amazing. They were fun, nice, supportive, and make learning fun for me. Second, my favorite activities are Fun Days, clubs, assemblies, and field trips. Fun Day is amazing because there are so many games, and I like to bounce out. They're so fun. Also, the field trips. We went to the auditorium and learned about space, like the solar system from Mr. Chantry. It was great. The R and environments at Club PA Club are awesome, too. Assemblies and other activities like Safety Patrol, Student Council are spectacular. Although we couldn't do a lot of them last year because of the pandemic, I still look forward to it. Another of my favorites at Eagleville are math and art. Math is so fun. I like how it's so tricky but always has an answer. My favorite special is art. I like the art projects we do, like Charles McGee Art and Tectango Landscapes. It's so fun. But the other specials are awesome, too. All of these are my favorite things at Eagleville. And what I think makes Eagleville awesome, although I could be graduating from Eagleville, I will never forget the wonderful memories I had there. Thank you for, thank you, Ms. Junkewitz, Ms. Bean, Ms. Neverett, Ms. Hendrick, Ms. Montella, Ms. Hopkum, and other teachers. Thank you for working hard for us to make Eagleville Elementary School awesome, especially during the pandemic. Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause to both of our junior board members. They did a wonderful job. Well done, and we'll certainly issue junior board member certificates to both of them. Thank you, Dr. Harmer, for having them with us here tonight. I'll turn the meeting back over to our Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. There was an executive session of the board held on Thursday, March 25th, virtually for matters of school safety and security and compliance with Act 44. There was also an executive session of the board held prior to this meeting, Tuesday, April 27th, again virtually for matters involving student settlement agreement. For attendance, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Cancro?
Here.
Ms. Drummond?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McGuinness?
Here.
Mr. Neverett?
Here.
Ms. Perdue?
Yeah.
Ms. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winters?
Here.
All right. Now, recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have four guests and scheduled speakers. Our first one is our regular, our monthly Award of Excellence. And this evening, we have none other than Eagleville Principal Dr. Kelly Harmer here with us to share about some outstanding employees here in Math Acton School District. Dr. Harmer, I'm going to turn it over to you. Just give me a second to get the presentation live on the screen.
Thank you.
Okay, it's all yours.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Zerby. Thank you so much for the honor to present the Award of Excellence for these fine Eagleville staff members. First, I'd like to start with Michelle Petco. Michelle is our Office Assistance and Attendance Secretary at Eagleville. She's such an important part of our office, Stephanie Evil, and she wears many hats throughout the course of each day. Michelle regularly communicates with parents, our school nurses, and teachers daily, and is a true student advocate. Her other responsibilities include breakfast duty, lunch duty, recess duty, and numerous other office clerical duties. With all these things on her plate, she still brings positive energy to the job every single day. Melissa Goferbauer is an exceptional personal care assistant. She provides academic and social support for her assigned student, but more importantly, she is invested in providing the tools needed for the student to be successful. I regularly receive praise from the students' parents and our staff about Melissa and the wonderful work she is doing each and every day. Thank you, Melissa. Jane Holmes is a caring and hardworking fourth grade teacher. She is also a leader and true advocate for her students. Jane builds connections with her students and takes time to get their, know their interests. Jane is always up for joining committee or pitching in to approve Eagleville. Her genuine love of our school and community makes Jane Holmes such an important piece of the Eagleville family. Nicole Kraus brings passion, knowledge, and history to her art classes at Eagleville. Nicole teaches the history of famous artists, and the children are fascinated to learn the different styles of each artist springs to their art. Every time I visit her classroom, I'm greeted with children that are immersed in their current projects and excited to have me see their work. Nicole also brightens the corridors of Eagleville with student artwork and works closely with teachers in order to coordinate projects that coincide with their curriculum. After-school Art Club is another contribution Nicole makes here at Eagleville, which is very popular offering to our older students. Melanie Connor is one of our outstanding reading department aides. Melanie possesses the ability to immediately connect with our students, which in turn leads to incredible academic gains. Our reading specialists and teachers lean heavily on Melanie since they know she has a toolbox of resources and skills to provide academic support for our students. The students enjoy Melanie's positivity and upbeat style of support. Shereen Jupnowitz. If you were to look up kindergarten teacher in the Webster Dictionary, most likely you would find a picture of Shereen Jupnowitz. Shereen embodies all the qualities that make a kindergarten, including kindness, sharing, curiosity, energy, and the love of learning. Shereen's students are truly lucky to have her leading them as they begin their educational journey. The true measure of a teacher may be the smiles that greet them every morning. I can say with confidence that the smiles of Mrs. J. students light up at Eagleville each and every day.
Join me in a round of applause for all these fine employees. It does, it makes a huge difference while we're proud of all the employees here at Math Acton School District and their contribution to making not only our students and our school community a wonderful place, but, but certainly, we're equally proud of being able to recognize just a few of them on a monthly basis to show you and the community how important they are to us and what contributions they've made specifically to the students and our, our school community. So, thank you, Dr. Harmer. Job well done this evening, and we'll make sure that all of these employees get the certificates that we have for them on this. So, with that said, thank you, Dr. Harmer. You're certainly welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting, but you're also welcome to leave us if that is, seems to be, you're, you're inclined to do so. So, with that said, we'll go on to the next scheduled presentation, and that is, we have with us this evening two, I'll call them regular guests. I guess it'd be the, you know, on an annual basis, we have Mr. Tom Kelly from Zeswitz Music, and we have Susan Bastlik, our coordinator for music here in the district. So, I'm not sure which one of you want to go first, but I'll, I'll let either of you talk now, and you guys can battle it out on screen.
Mr. Kelly, would you like to speak first?
Sure, why not? I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Zerby, and the board members, staff that's on here, and those that are in attendance. I'm proud to be the education representative for Zeswitz Music, but tonight I come to you as a representative of the NAMM Foundation. And NAMM stands for the National Association of Music Merchants. And this particular prestigious award, the Best Communities for Music Education, has been awarded to the Math Acton School District for the fifth year running. Thank you, Amanda Kelly, for, I couldn't remember how many it was. So, it's, it's, it's an honor to be with you tonight, but, but really, we're, we're here to honor the, the community, the administration, the staff, the parents, the students. The NAMM Foundation started this particular program 20-plus years ago, and, and, and it isn't, just to give you the scope and sequence, it's not just apply and, and you get this particular award. They did not publish this year how many people applied, but it's in the thousands. Last year, it was just over 5,000 people. This year, only 686 school districts across the country were awarded this particular, you know, accolade, if you will, and I'm proud to say that Math Acton is one of them, and, and it's, it's quite a, quite an honor. And, and ride that wave, if you will. I know that Mrs. Bastlik may talk about the, the actual application process. It's 30-plus pages of documentation that goes into great detail. It, it talks about the, the ensembles that are provided, band chorus and orchestra, the performance opportunities, the concerts, rehearsal spaces that are provided, and, and, and all of this through a pandemic. The staff of the Math Acton School District really has, has risen to the, to the top of, of the heap. It's through the support of, of many different factors, parents, students, staff, administration, that, that you're continuing to delve into this particular accolade, and, and I'm very proud to, to be here with you all tonight. So, Sue, can you add anything else?
Sure can. First of all, thank you. A very, very big thank you. It takes a village, really, to keep a music department going and our musical activities going. So, from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank our parents, our community members, our staff, our school district staff, most importantly, my wonderful colleagues. They, they're out there doing an absolutely fabulous job every day. And of course, our students, because without our students, we would be nothing. As Mr. Kelly indicated, the application for NAMM is quite extensive, and this year, they asked the question, what activities have you been able to do as part of, while the pandemic has been going on? And yes, we know the pandemic has made a very, has, has had a very significant impact on everything we've done. But when I sat down and thought about all the activities we've been able to do as a department, the list is lengthy, and I'm proud to mention it. The very first activity to get going, once we started school this year, other than marching band, doing summer camp, was our adaptive learners class at the high school. Our adaptive music class, they were the first class live back in the high school. Our first music class. We're very, very pleased with that. Speaking of our marching band, they competed in several virtual competitions in the fall. Our high school chorus, every other Monday evening, runs a COVID café so that the students can perform for each other. We have done two family sing-alongs, two beautifully put-together family sing-alongs coordinated by our K-4 elementary music staff. We have had virtual concerts this year for the holiday season and again for music in our schools month, and we'd like to thank Ms. Kelly for helping us get them onto the website. Those concerts were done on Flipgrid and featured the performances of our students. We have had virtual rehearsals all year long. We are now preparing for a virtual K-4 spring concert, which will be held via YouTube Live on Mar, on May 26th. So, yes, we have been able to keep music going here in Math Acton, and again, it's thanks to all of the great efforts for everybody, and we really, really appreciate, we really, really appreciate that. I think probably the most important thing, though, that we've been able to do as a department this year is we have served as a lifeline, a social, emotional lifeline to so many of our students at home. I can tell you that many of my students have told me that when they talk to me and when they talk to my colleagues, sometimes it's the only people they've talked to, really, outside of their homes, all day. And that is really gratifying to hear and to have the opportunity to continue to share music with our students, regardless of the educational environment this year, has been absolutely wonderful and very much appreciated. So, thank you to everybody, and we're very, very delighted to accept the award again this year.
Congratulations.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Bastlik. Thank you both so much. When I say you're regular fixtures, you're welcome to come back every year. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You, too. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is full-day kindergarten. It's entitled Financials Fit in Sequence. Bear with me one second till I, I get that presentation posted. So, this presentation, I'm going to go through it summarily, but generally speaking, most of this information was shared this past month in, in both the property committee meetings and the finance committee meetings. So, board members that have, that are parts of those two committees are seeing much of this again. But I think it's important that, generally speaking, these last three pieces of information are probably going to round out the information that you need as a, a school board member in order to make a determination based on a recommendation that we'll have Dr. Uker and myself bring forward in May for your consideration. So, with that said, let's jump right into the presentation. Certainly, full-day kindergarten fits well within the tenets of the, the five tenets of the whole child, and it certainly, you know, targets creating an exceptional Math Acton School experience for all. In terms of full-day kindergarten, you know that Dr. Uker has been before you, provided three options in her last visit with you back in January, both a half-day option, two half-day options, and then the full day for all students. We will be recommending the, the, the third option, which is full-day kindergarten for all students, beginning with the 22-23 school year. And this presentation is going to assume that we're going to answer some of these questions like, you know, how can we afford, afford the program? How will the students fit? And so forth. But a couple of points of information. So, when we look at moving from a half-day program to a full-day program, there are some immediate adjustments that take place, transportation being one of them. There's no longer a need for the midday runs. That's going to save us about $77,000 annually. In terms of food service, now, we currently do not feed kindergarten students, but we would now feed them. In our review of that particular matter, based on the subsidies for reimbursable meals, we, we've estimated that this will be a cost-neutral event. In terms of further financials, we know that in order to complete an entire program in the Math Acton School District for kindergarten, based on the enrollment projections, we're going to need four teachers or four classrooms and four teachers in each of the four elementary schools. That's Arrowhead, Eagleville, Woodland, and WarSister. We're also going to need some support staff, and it's outlined here in this presentation, two aides and two PCAs as projected. In addition to other financials associated with this, we have projected year-one cost, and then we have the projected annual staffing cost. And so, we'll look in the column to the, to the left where we talk about staff. That's taking all 20 staff and putting them into the same, into this program. It would be about $2.5 million. We believe that there'll be an investment of about $50,000 in curriculum resources, 50 in about, in furniture, some professional development. There will be a reduction in, in additional costs, including the Jump Start program, and like I said earlier, transportation, which would net about a $2.53 million year-one cost. So, that is the staffing plus some of these one-time costs and these, what are called, would be annual reductions. If we look at the projected annual staffing cost, we know that we have an existing kindergarten teachers in the district. We actually have 7.5, meaning that we have, we have eight bodies, eight physical people, but that teach 7.5 sections of kindergarten, and that cost is about $1.1 million. We also have an existing staff reallocation of six, which I'll explain in, in just a, a few slides. But we're going to take some of our existing special education staff, reallocate them within the K-4 structure, which costs us about $878,000. And then we have the existing staff and sports, support staff to do a reallocation of, of two of those for $132,000, or a total existing cost in the budget of about $2.1 million. In terms of new staff needed, we would need new, two new support staff, two new teaching, 2.5 teaching staff. And so, when you look at the, the math associated with this, the, the 0.5 person up, up in this first part, you should know that their benefits are already included up in here, and that they would just be picking up the additional hours down in this bottom part here, just to make sure you're, you're following me on this. So, the total new cost required in, in the annual budget would be about $375,000. But if we take out the annual cost for the Jump Start program and the annual cost for transportation, that would leave us with a net new annual cost of about $281,000 to implement full-day kindergarten here in Math Acton. Now, the key element of all this, and you'll see this in a minute, is making sure that we adopt the SOAR program. In the SOAR program, Dr. Angstad spoke very eloquently about which will be addressing the, the behavioral and mental health matters within the K-4 realm and providing, infusing outside behavioral specialists into all four of our elementary schools. And certainly, you can ask, you know, her any more questions about that if, if, as you see fit, and it's on the agenda for your approval this evening. But aside from SOAR, we also need, we require the realignment or the reassignment of staff, which is, which is inclusive of this K-4 Inclusive Practices Program Delivery Structure Modification for to begin on the 22-23 school year, which would be the same timeframe for which we would implement full-day kindergarten. So, this is not for next school year, as the SOAR program is to start next school year, but the K-4 Inclusive Practices would be two years out. Also, we can, we, we have some conversations in the finance committee about how to address a one-time cost, and then there's, you know, other, other, you know, financing options that we could allow us to ease into the, the $280,000 of annual additional expense if we see fit. So, we can certainly talk about that in, in a few minutes. And, and just so everyone recognizes, not only the board, but the members of the public, you know, this is not a matter for which the board is voting on this evening. So, this is really the first presentation in, in, in its entirety, outside of what Dr. Uker has previously provided. So, I just want to make sure we're clear on that. The only thing that is on the agenda is the SOAR program. So, let's talk about the, you know, how, how are we going to reallocate those, those staff? And when I think, I'm just going to come back here for a second. We're talking about the reallocation of, of these six staff here. Okay? So, what, what we've been trying to address for a few years now, and since two, since 2019, we received a, an audit from the state, as well as we had a third-party expert come in and do a review, or we'll call it an audit, of our, our special education services. And as a result of both the state audit and the third-party expert review, the recommendations for more inclusive practices and a, and a really restructuring of the way we deliver special education services was highly recommended. As a result of those recommendations and many conversations and a discussion that Dr. Angstad had within the last several weeks with all the special education staff at the K-4 level, as well as with discussions with the, with the SEA, which is the Special Education Alliance, which is our parent group that helps support the endeavors of, of, of students with special needs within the Math Acton School District. Both groups, which are highly supportive of, of this particular change, it should be known that the key elements that are listed on this slide is that we improve access to the general curriculum. That's what, that's what inclusive practices really means, is that our special education students gain greater access to the regular education or general education curriculum. That's what this program does. And as a, as a simple example, in, in our current structure, we have special education teachers that are set up in classrooms, what we'll consider down the hall. In this, in this scenario and in this structure, our teachers will be pushing into the regular ed classrooms where the special education students and regular education students will remain for, for the day. Instead of leaving, instead of the special education student leaving the classroom and going down the hall to where the, the teacher is. And when we talk about gaining access to general curriculum, we're not only talking about gaining more time, but we're also gaining, you know, the expert of, of two teachers being in the classroom, teaming and working together to not only provide instruction to the special education student, but to all students in the classroom. In addition to that, another major benefit to this restructuring is for our staff. It actually allows our staff to be greater specialized in a particular grade level. By doing this, it allows them to plan better and to become, you know, more engaged in the work across that particular grade level, rather than being able to, which they, which is what they do now, is they actually juggle their time between multiple grade levels, which can be challenging. And, and, and lastly, from a district perspective, this allows us to, to have a continuum of supports and services for our students. So, how does this actually work and look? So, if we look at our current program structure in K-4 Special Education Program Delivery, we have teachers organized by certain areas, and those areas are K-2 learning support, 3-4 learning support, itinerant support, emotional support, as is listed here. And these are the number of positions that are currently in there and the number of instructional assistants that are currently assigned to these areas. And support is then provided by students leaving the regular ed classroom, going down the hallway to the classrooms that these aides and, and teachers are, are located in. The recommendation is that, or the modification will be to change the structure at the 22-23 school year, whereby we have the special education teachers organized by grade level, which allows them, especially in grades three and four, allows them just to, to specialize on the grade level, where we start seeing the students being, seeing them getting more identified compared to grades one and two. But it does something very particular that actually not only provides special education services at the K-level, but allows us to, I'll call it, complete two major tasks at one time. And that is to, not only to, to meet the, the needs of inclusive practices, as Dr. Angstad has organized here, but also allows for us to now have a dual-certified kindergarten teacher in each of the four elementary schools, where they, the teacher can not only provide the, the kindergarten class instruction, but also be the one who's already most familiar with the behavioral, mental health, and other adaptations that are necessary for providing services to students with special needs in the kindergarten level. So, the staffing levels actually all stay the same, but it's just a modification of how we're using that staff for the purpose of keeping students in the classroom and also for the purpose of, of being able to provide full-day kindergarten. In terms of fit, we, we understand that in looking at our overall enrollment, the enrollment projections inclusive of the new construction at Arrowhead and the construction at Eagleville, you can see that the yellow area means that enrollment is projected or is at what we call a warning level. That is, that is those cells in yellow, and then a critical level, which are those cells in red. In terms of space and redistricting, principals have already determined the means to provide the appropriate space for the program. This means providing two additional classrooms for the ability to offer full-day kindergarten, starting with the 22-23 school year. It will require four classrooms in each building. And in terms of redistricting, it's my recommendation, as I spoke to the property committee meeting members, that we review the balancing of enrollments against the available space. It will require a third party to come in and help us plan and adjust for any of the modifications that are necessary, given the projections and given the actual enrollments as, as we proceed forward. This may allow us to phase in a redistricting approach. It may allow us to, you know, you know, kind of do the same process that we did, not, just a few years ago with the closure of, of Audubon. But it's really important that, you know, someone who works in this space in terms of redistricting and enrollment is able to come in and work with the administration so that we can is able to come in and work with the administration so that we can provide the board any recommendations so that we can have a vision for how we can manage what is currently projected to be some challenges at Warsester, potentially at Woodland. And and we want to make sure that with the construction of Arrowhead and Eagleville, we can leverage those investments to the best of our ability. In terms of sequencing, we want you to just really understand that the reason we're asking you to consider full day kindergarten almost a year ahead of its implementation is that by doing so, it allows us to prepare and prepare well. We not only need to, you know, take care of of the professional development of teachers, which will go from teaching a half day program, which is much different than teaching a full day program. And certainly, we need to make sure that we take care of all the transitions and all the planning necessary for room configurations, parent communications. And if redistricting is included in that first year, a communication and review and recommendations associated with that. Certainly, transportation and new routing needs to occur for for that for the those schedules. And there may be some other scheduling modifications that are necessary. There's a abbreviated timeline associated with the implementation of the full day kindergarten project. It's listed here from having the board presentations with May being the opportunity where the board could consider adopting the recommendation from the administration. If that were to happen, the rest of the the rest of the timeline would be implemented with within this structure. So with that said, I'm just going to open the floor up to some questions. I'm going to also just reiterate the fact that I'm not asking the board for a vote or anything of that nature this evening. This is really a first opportunity for the full board to kind of get a handle on on what is really around the corner in May with Dr. Uker and myself coming forward with a recommendation. So with that said, we'll take questions from the board. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, one question. When you talked about the dual certification for moving forward for the kindergarten, the seven and a half current kindergarten teachers, did they have or a portion of them have that dual certification already?
They do.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I noticed Dr. Costin was in this presentation and I have heard that name. But if someone could just share more about the process of her engagement and evaluation of our current practices and how that informed this presentation.
I'm sorry, Ms. Drummond. I my window was open and motorcycle was going by, so I had to I had to remove myself from listening to you to shut the window. I apologize.
That's okay. I was just asking about Dr. Costin and I know I've heard that name. But if someone could just share a little more about her evaluation of our current practices and how her evaluation has informed this presentation.
Absolutely. Dr. Engstad, I know that you're on the call with us. As our resident expert, would you mind?
Not a problem. So we had Dr. Costin come in. She is a leading expert in inclusive practices. And when we received the results of our compliance monitoring audit, once again pointing out least restrictive environment and disproportionality as areas of need, we contacted with her to come in and do a needs assessment for us. We wanted her to review our existing programs and really kind of just give us an outside opinion of what is it we could do to further enhance opportunities for inclusion. What her report indicated is that we had many of the resources, but it was the allocation of those resources that could be better utilized. And she just provided a lot of feedback about, you know, thinking about the number of transitions for kids during a day, having kids still going down to separate learning support classrooms, and that there were just newer ways of providing those same services within that least restrictive environment. So taking that information into consideration, then we really started analyzing how could we provide the same support? And the number one thing that I remember even as the special education supervisor years ago was the number of concerns teacher our special ed staffs had about teaching multiple grade levels and what could we do to improve that? And this structure would allow us to finally make that change and allow them to focus on a particular grade level while also ensuring that we have the necessary support in kindergarten for students who may be at risk or have developmental delays and have some area of expertise in that area early on.
Great, thank you. And then I just have a sort of question, which I know is maybe in the weeds. But, you know, I know that sometimes we talk about the scheduling and just to make sure that, you know, the cafeteria space and the special schedule and all of that is. I mean, of course, it's being addressed, but it's all feasible with this because I know sometimes that gets tight.
No, that's all been discussed by the elementary principals. And as you all may recall, and maybe you don't, because it's been over, you know, a two year process. Dr. Uker has been before you a number of times. And, you know, she's been leading that, leading most of those discussions, not only here with the board, but with the other elementary principals. So I'm confident that we'll be able to manage, you know, all those other particulars. So there might be some modifications in order to make sure that things, you know, run properly. And certainly, there could be an impact depending on whether or not we have to redistrict, as an example. But certainly, we believe that we're going to be able to provide the services in a appropriate fashion.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Mr. Navarro?
I just wanted to thank you. This is, I can think of a pretty fabulous summary of everything that's been presented to us so far. I think you've hit all the high notes. I know we saw it in property, we saw it in finance. I still have some small questions around the inclusive practices model, but that's just my unfamiliarity with everything. I would say that, you know, the SCA sponsored a number of sessions with Dr. Costin that were open to the public, and there were a lot of people from a lot of school districts. I don't know how many other board members were on there. But I'll tell you what, it helped me a lot in terms of wrapping my mind around what we were doing and why, some of the, you know, simple things, even just, you know, just accounting for transition times because we have kids walking down the hall and walking back and just lost instructional time. Obviously, that's the kind of the bare minimum type of thing. But yeah, thank you for this. This has been a multi-year process to get to this point. I appreciate the efforts of everyone here to really weave a lot of these solutions together so that we can we can put together a program that's best for all of our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Ms. Hall?
I think we might have already expressed this in property. So I'm sorry if I'm re-asking kind of the same thing. But in the presentation last week for SOAR, we talked about the need for a sensory room and space for the clinician for the REACH program. And now we're talking about two extra rooms for the kindergarten per elementary school. Have we started to identify how we're going to utilize all these spaces as we move forward in this?
Dr. Engstad, in terms, I know where the kindergarten rooms are.
Yes, so the the plan is currently all of the special education teachers have individual rooms. So as we move to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year, we would create a learning support suites where there would be two rooms occupied. So if kids or students still needed small group testing or they needed some direct instruction, our special education teachers still have a place to call home and provide that support for students. Additionally, for the REACH program, we're looking to use the same space that our current central behavioral, mental health specialists would use. They share that same support in the building. So they would make sure the schedule matches up so they would have a space available. And we're currently looking for a room in each location to use for the sensory room.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any other questions from members of the board? And you'll be able to, you know, absorb this information and also ask questions next month as well. Any last questions on this? If not, thank you very much. And the next presentation that we have for this evening is the budget present budget update. And we'll have Mr. Bricker join us on that. Presentation is up and live.
Thank you, Dr. Kirby. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the April update to the Methacra School District's budget for twenty one twenty two, which you'll see here is the changes in revenue that occurred in the April update. We were impacted by an increase of assessments of about four point eight million dollars. We also had changes in social security due to the changes in staff, which also includes the retirement impact. And there was other medical and other benefits that impacted that allowed us to reduce the overall revenue specifically to the real estate taxes by a hundred and forty two thousand, seven hundred and seventy three dollars and fifty nine cents. The current millage was reduced to two point three nine eight percent. Next slide, please. What what does this mean to the homeowners? So what we did is we create, we changed a slide a little bit from last time where now the values are more round numbers and the assessments would be assessed based on the values. So more people know what their home is worth versus what their assessment is. The circular line there is the Methacra School District average. The average home value in Methacra is about three hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, which gives you a assessed value of seven one hundred and seventy four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. The impact of this tax increase would be a hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety five cents per year for the homeowner or a total real estate tax of five thousand, five hundred, six dollars and eight cents. Next slide, please. With expenditures, already mentioned that the fact that salaries went down. We also had an increase in medical prescription and eye care. But we had decreases in dental, social security contributions, retirement contributions, and workman's comp policy came in, which was positive. It was a nice nineteen thousand, seven hundred, ninety three dollars and ninety nine cent reduction. Total changes are a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. We also did have a change on the operating expenses, but that was just a reclassification of the expenses. It's neutral to the to the expenditures, but it is putting the expenses in the proper area. You'll see in the bottom table that what the healthcare increases were based on the second look. They range from open choice three at thirteen point eight five, open choice two fifteen percent, POS fourteen point four four, open choice three ten percent, and so forth, down twenty one point one five percent for the RX. Good news is the third look came out and the numbers have been reduced. So we'll see some savings on the May update when provided to the board. Next slide, please. Overall, we have a balanced budget of one hundred, one hundred and fifteen million, two hundred and twenty six thousand, three hundred and thirty nine, three hundred and seventy nine dollars and three cents. Next slide. I wanted to point out some of the things that we did this year to help save the budget and cut expenses. We have five hundred thousand dollars of charter school costs that we would be paid and we're committed funds thanks to the board's decision to allow us to commit funds. So we're able to take that out, assuming that those charter school expenses are one time expenses. And that way, we don't impact the taxpayers with that amount. Charter schools, just to be to point it out, charter schools in Methacra School District average sixteen thousand, seventy seven dollars and thirty five percent per student on cyber charter school schooling, where the district virtual academy charges forty nine hundred dollars. We have four thousand dollars of IT costs that we've done to align our one to one cost that we've been able to use a grant for. We have two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars of debt service, which will be through the paying off already of the ESCO lease and the pending payoff of the North Monaco Technical Career Center lease. A curriculum will be pushing items from next year's budget into this year's budget by buying roughly about a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars worth of the textbooks and other items that they need for the next coming school year. We also lowered our legal costs by about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, which is dependent on us making the changes to reduce that, making an effort to make those changes to reduce the legal fees. And we have lower substitute costs, again, of about another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The total of all these costs amount to one point seven five million dollars being removed from the budget. Next slide. Items coming up. In May, we'll be using the April end of month assessments. We'll be changing the millage rate based on the change of assessment and any expenditure changes. We will have staffing changes. There were some recent retirements. You'll see some on the coming up. We also have the property E and O insurance. We'll get the final number there. And I already mentioned about the third look on medical and prescription. Of note is all major changes in the control of the school district government incorporated in the budget with the above items being the only remaining items. The open contracts with the confidential, Mayo, Mespa, and Teamsters are still open. And once finalized, will be incorporated into the budget. And that concludes the budget report. Any questions?
Since the board, Mr. McGess?
Tim, did I hear you correctly and say the third look is already in?
Yeah, it came in Friday.
Okay, but it's not reflected in these numbers, correct?
No, I haven't had a chance to apply it to the to the staff yet.
Small, medium, or large impact?
I guess that's all relative, but I'll say it's probably a good, good amount of money.
Just say small, Tim. Put, set the bar low. Come on, pal.
But it was, but it was good news, correct?
Yeah, so it went down. It went down for the most part. The prescription went down, the medical went down. So we should see a reduction in healthcare benefits.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Navarro?
Yeah, just one, I guess, to follow up on Drew's point there. The I guess in your estimation, given what you just talked about, not only with the third look, but also with some additional retirements coming in. I know we typically have seen assessments kick up over the course of the budgeting season. So is it very likely that we're looking at even going lower in terms of tax increase once the final numbers are in?
I believe we'll be below the two point three nine eight. I think we'll be closer to two as an estimate right now. But that's without knowing all of the different items and where the assessments will fall. Because obviously, a reduction would go the wrong way for us.
Yeah, certainly. One question on the second or last slide, the one before this one. Just to make sure so it's clear for everyone, those last two bullets on there about reducing legal costs and substitute costs, those weren't paid by any deferred or committed funds, right? Those are simply changes that we've made operationally that we can take out of the budget, correct?
Yeah, so the the lower legal costs, we're hoping operational changes will lower our legal costs by about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in from the preliminary budget. And then the substitute costs. So each year, we evaluate the substitute cost. And what we try and do is get that attritional savings that has been mentioned. And we try and transition the attritional savings when someone's out, someone's sabbatical or changes in position occur, where that savings then gets put into the is through a budget transfer, helps pay for the subs. We've reduced the sub, probably the sub cost annually by about nine hundred to a million dollars annually in that category. So the attritional savings that may have been seen previously in the salaries and benefits is not really going to be there in a normal operating year.
Got it. Thank you. I just want to make sure that was clear for everybody that was watching. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget? Because his next presentation is the forecast. Ms. Drummond?
I just want to thank you for including the point of reference about the cost of cyber charter schools because that's something that the PSBA and the IU, the MCIU Legislative Committee has been working on. You know, with working on to bring light to the, you know, that the cost of the cyber charters is sixteen thousand to us, but is forty nine hundred per student within our virtual academy. So I thank you for including that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments on the budget? Seeing none, I will go on to the forecast. Mr. Bricker?
Yeah, this is the forecast for this current year and where we anticipate to end at this point in time. Forecasted revenue is about one point one million dollars above budget. A lot of that comes into grants that we received and did not receive. Example was the school safety grant. We are not Example was the school safety grant. We are not going to receive that due to COVID, some of that expenses as well as the benefit of the grant won't be seen until next year. The county grants came in about 319,000 with the SRS of about 193,000. Interest incomes over by 100 is over by 172,000. And we have other grants of about 154,000, but the main driving item right now is the interim real estate taxes due to construction and SEOs that are increasing as the construction closes are about $850,000. So that's that's a significant increase from where we anticipated to be. Next slide. Okay, so in the expenditures, you have a total savings or
Be on the right side?
Yes, I just the the titles were on that. That's been through me for a second. There's $2 million of surplus of unspent or expected surplus in the expenditures. Driving at will be the obviously the transportation of about $2.6 million. You have $946,000 of legal costs that are well above our budgeted numbers. Technology had $350,000 as we purchased Chromebooks this year so that we would not have to purchase them for next year. As we move to a one-to-one setting. That was anticipated and a decision made so that we can get the one-to-one setting and align our leases and technology needs on a more flat and steady future level. Medical insurance is saving us about $265,000 based on choices and decisions being made. And people services is estimated to have a savings of about $250,000. Again, the most important thing in this is the transportation savings of $2.6 million. That does include us paying them the the 36% roughly of 39.6% of the unrun routes. We're back. It's a very relatively small number in comparison to the total bill. Next slide. A committed funds. One of the things I wanted to point out, while there's the savings over there, we also are using our committed funds. When you look at the way that's done, the committed funds will actually come out of the general fund, potentially giving us a negative savings. A negative impact on our general funds, but then when you or use those funds, which is an off balance counting turn way of using it, it will actually show as that netting back to zero and putting us back having the money back in our account. It's 3.3 million. The original plan was to commit $500,000 for the fuel tank and 2.6 million for Peasars. Peasars projection as provided by the financial areas at PASBO and other areas all had Peasars coming in close to 40. Made a prudent decision to have $2.6 million set aside in case that occurred and to make sure we did not impact the taxpayers with that. Now that we know where Peasars is and the stabilization of that, we were able to uncommit them for the Peasars and actually use those funds to save the taxpayers on the ESCO and North Monaco ongoing lease payments. Next slide. So here's how it all pulls together. Our revenue is up by about $1 million. Our expenditures are down about $2 million, giving us roughly a $3.1 million savings. We are going to be spending from our committed funds, $2.8 million, which gives us a net cash of about $300,310,000 from the district's point of view. Next slide. Okay, so this is kind of showing you how if you look at our audit. Our audited financials is kind of taking it through how it will go. You'll see the committed funds for the fuel tank, $500,000 there. We'll be using that $500,000, which will leave us zero in those committed funds. You uncommit the funds for Peasars and then you use that to pay for the leases. So that's kind that washes there. And you have the unassigned fund balance impact of $3.1 million. Then you have your committed funds for the charter school, $603,000. Our net forecasted income, this is important. We are showing a loss for the year of $190,000. Again, that is only due to the fact that you're using the committed funds to pay the committed funds are in the general funds and unassigned funds. So they'll the unassigned funds will get used, then the committed funds will come in and replenish that amount of money. At the end of the day, we will have to recommit some funds to the because we'll have still have a surplus to the uncommitted funds. We'll still have to commit funds. So that'll be in your June board meeting. And that concludes the forecast on the projection.
Questions on the forecast? See no questions on the forecast?
David, I just
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's okay. Yeah, can you put that back up?
Absolutely.
Can you go back one? I think it's one slide, maybe. Yeah, yeah, that was it. No. Yeah, so I let's start here. Realistically, right? I mean, we can talk about the cash flows, cash flow, committed funds, sorry. The committed funds expenditures here, right? But essentially, when we look at this year over year, those are those are still last year's. Those are last year's funds, right? So we're, as you stated, right, then the the big number here to focus on is the 3.1. And I think you broke that down really well, right? It's driven by primarily by transportation, right? The number is what is it 2.6 in transportation cost that went on spent. Can you go back one more slide, David? I missed it. Go back one more.
Slide three.
Yeah. So when we talk about legal fees, so the number here now comes to 946. I think that's different than what we saw in finance, right? Does this number now include the costs associated with the Shenandoah litigation at the end of March?
This is the, this is the same slide presentation that we did in finance. It will actually be going up when all the Shenandoah legal expenses come in, as well as the other trailing legal expenses come in. So that is just projecting where we think it will end at this year. And to be clear, that's $950,000 over the budgeted figure of $425,000.
Right.
So it's a total expenditure of roughly 1.4 million.
Any other questions for members of the board? I seeing any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Booker.
Thank you.
And that ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. You can turn the the meeting back over to the Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So moving on, we have our committee reports. All of our standing committees of the board have their reports attached to the agenda. For the DEI report, we have Ms. Drummond.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the DEI report is that the DEI leadership team and the Mathacton School District DEI Committee, we held our first meeting on March 24. And that was to introduce the members of the committees and outline the work. The subcommittees had their own scheduled meet team meetings to meet throughout the month of April. And we're working on the equity audit. We're working, we're going through the questions and working on that. The full committee is going to meet again tomorrow on April 28 to work finalizing the audit for a May release. If you have any other questions, there is a section now on the Mathacton website for DEI and you can stay apprised of our work that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. And for the intermediate unit, Ms. Reese?
Um, hello. We met, we're always a month behind because we meet tomorrow. So we also met on March 24 and I'll just give you a brief update. For those unaware, because it's it's been a while since I've said this, all the board documents for the IU are on on the IU site. It's all the business of the IU and it's a, it's a, it's a lengthy agenda that we go through. But most prevalent to Mathacton was as of March 24, the IU had administered 10,600 vaccinations. So it was amazing and they had about 1,640 more to go. So it was a total little over 12,000. So just a huge thanks, thank you to everyone involved at the IU. They worked with a company called AMI, the Department of Ed, the National Guard and the Governor's Office and Dr. Regina Speaker just thanked the HR directors for their incredible organization of all that. The other big topic was just that all the superintendents in entire Montgomery County are always talking to the IU about the substitute teachers across the county and the state is an issue right now. And another just notable point, because I think it's happening all over, is the IU had 15 retirements. Sorry, I don't know if anyone heard that yelling in the back. So someone's yelling at a dog. I apologize. North Monaco's next. I don't know if Liz wanted to share or Liz, you wanted me to share?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. My other notes page here. We had a very busy meeting on April 19th and I won't go into every detail, but because there are ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, 12th graders, part-time, full-time. Them coming back into the building has been a very complicated but productive process. So they have over 60% of their 10th graders now. The 11th, the remaining 11th grade graders were coming back May 5th, not full-time, that means, or full-time for them. And the ninth graders were going to remain hybrid due to the numbers. It just wasn't possible and we they knew they had met a couple more years with those ninth graders, but every, everyone who attends the tech center is aware of what's going on. I just wanted to let the members of the public know that the the tech center has been working really, really hard and working with the Montgomery Health Department. Because it's a trickier, trickier building. The superintendents take turns. It used to be two-year turn and then Dr. Gallagher had three years. So does Mr. Dietrich, Dr. Dietrich from North Penn is going to take a third year. We had shared that the Naughtiest assessment, which is huge for them, that the written was very good and they have the practical exams next. So the hands-on exams next. They have a slightly revised calendar for the North Monaco because they actually did have a few snow days. They had some built in, but they needed to teacher days. So students will be have been apprised of that. And then the most exciting news, I can't believe I'm saying this. And we will be sharing, the tech center will be sharing and I'm sure we'll be sharing more. May 5th, finally curbside pickup lunches from the culinary students. So there's going to be online ordering and payments. I will forward that to the board members. I think I have a day off on May 18th. So if anybody wants to join me for curbside pickup. They are going to have a senior recognition. And it's going to be indoor at North Penn, but it will be split into split into two groups due to the size. That'll be live streamed, just like Mathacton did a five-year facility plan, excuse me, a 10-year facility plan. North Monaco is working on their five-year facility plan. Last two things, it was a busy meeting. Gina Partovich is their director and we renewed her contract and I just hands hands a big round of applause for Gina Partovich. She's really handled everything very well. And then we renewed the contract for Jeff Saltanic and for those familiar with Mr. Saltanic. It's his 43rd year as the North Monaco Technical Career Center lawyer solicitor. And he asked everyone not to do the math. So thank you. Apologize for the long-winded report.
And if I could just jump in and add one thing, and that was that they really wanted to recognize the school nurses in all of the school districts for working so hard with, you know, contact tracing if needed and just, you know, advice. And they gave a particular shout out to Cheryl Pfeiffer at the high school for her help and assistance with everything Monaco, North Monaco Tech related. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you both. Now we have our student board representatives reports. We have Chris Spletzer and Nolan McCloskey.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. The junior class social is going to take place on May 25 at Heuner Park. It's going to be a hangout for juniors with food, drinks and games, all following approved social distancing procedures by the country. This will be an afternoon event to celebrate the conclusion of the school year. Sports are finally back in full swing, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse and softball, each only have one loss so far this season. Due to COVID, there is no conference playoffs. So the team with the best record at the end of the season is the pack champion. Now I'd like to pass on to Chris for his report.
Yes, hello there. We are officially well into the fourth marking period and by my calculations, we have 33 days left of instruction after the school day of this meeting. I am pleased to report that we've seen swift upswings in the number of in-person attendees as relative to earlier months. And with those in-person attendees, Mathacton is shifting back somewhat to its former sensibility and glory. AP tests are on the horizon for many of Mathacton students. And with the cancellation of official finals, this will be one of the last great efforts on the part of many of our students this year. I am pleased to report a sense of buoyancy is abound through the school and the hallways as April will soon give way to May. People continue to get vaccinated each and every day as with passing and with passing days, sports, extracurriculars, and even the average school day returning to normalcy seems more and more plausible. Planning and administrative work for Mathacton's senior event has started in earnest with dress codes being established, tables for the venue being set and superlatives being voted on. That will take place on the 21st of May. Graduation has also been determined for the 10th of June at Subaru Field, home of the Philadelphia Union. Information was released by Dr. Gravenese last week to the seniors. And please check the website for more information. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you both. And now for our Mathacton Education Foundation report, we have Ms. Krelavich.
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis and School Board Directors and Dr. Zerby. We've got some exciting news at the foundation that we wanted to share. As many of you know, next month is Teacher Appreciation Month. It starts in May and every day while Mathacton teachers go above and beyond for our children. This year has been especially challenging. Our teachers and staff have risen to the challenge for our kids. So now it's our chance to share the love. Share the Love is an opportunity to show Mathacton teachers and staff our love, thanks, gratitude while supporting a great cause. You can recognize your child's current and former teachers as well as staff members and aides with a Share the Love certificate from our website and a personal message. You can learn more at mathactonfoundation.org. As you heard just from our school board representatives or our student school board representatives. Graduation this year promises to be extra special. It'll be the first ever high school graduation at Philadelphia Union Subaru Park. Every graduate will receive eight tickets with a fantastic view of the ceremony. There's also going to be a drawing where seniors will receive where there's a raffle for seniors to receive a private suite where their family can watch the ceremony. Thanks to the district, the foundation has two very exciting fundraising opportunities that offer convenience and family to families and support educational opportunities in Mathacton. The first is graduation pre-orders that can be, sorry, graduation flower pre-orders that can be picked up right at the graduation ceremony through our partnership by with Penny's Biplaza Flowers, a Mathacton-owned family business. The second are private suite reservations that families can take advantage of so that they can enjoy the comfort and convenience of the graduates, graduation ceremony while supporting a great cause. More information is available at mathactonfoundation.org. All of the campaigns and the appeals that the foundation offers like Share the Love and the graduation suites help to fund innovative educational programs and support economically disadvantaged students in Mathacton. As an education foundation, we are a 501(c) nonprofit and donations are tax deductible to the extent of the law. We raise money through partnerships with businesses, individuals and foundations to fund innovative educational opportunities for all of the kids in Mathacton. We work closely with the amazing teachers and administrators in this district who develop these really cool ideas into programs that can enhance our student learning. Things like the STEM maker spaces in the elementary school, loaner instruments for economically Things like the STEM maker spaces in the elementary school, loaner instruments for economically disadvantaged kids, mental health resources, entrepreneurship courses, and the new hydroponic farm lab. And should I mention that thanks to Mr. Savitz and the support of the administration and the school board, Methacton will be the first high school in Pennsylvania to have this lab. The truth is, there is so much more we can do. You can learn about all of these things that I discussed tonight and more about the foundation at methactonfoundation.org. We'd like to thank everybody who has donated to all of our campaigns to help our mission. And if you have any questions about any of these things, please reach out to me directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krelovich. I see we have three such programs on our agenda for this evening. It's very exciting to see the work the foundation is doing. Now for our communications update, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. The Methacton Unified Track and Field Team hosted its first meet of the season at home against Perk Valley and Lower Moreland High Schools on April 19th. It was a picture-perfect day for our student athletes, coaches, and attendees. And speaking of pictures, we posted a slideshow and a video of highlights on the district's website and social media channels. So please check it out if you haven't already. And congratulations to all of the Methacton High School students who participated in the Delaware Valley Science Fair, which was held virtually earlier this month. Methacton had a very strong showing. Fifteen students either placed first, second, or third, or received honorable mention in the competition. Sophomore Lucy Wang earned first place in the biochemistry category and won the bronze medal overall in the 10th Grade Fair. Lucy's project focused on the single-cell atlas of mouse colitis tissue. Okay. She's now eligible to represent Methacton in the International Science and Engineering Fair, which will be also held virtually next month. Later this week, Skyview Upper Element, excuse me, Skyview Upper Elementary School will be holding their annual Career Day event virtually. On Thursday, students will hear from the keynote presenter, Stephanie Fee. She's a former field hockey Olympian and now an entrepreneur. On Friday, students will engage several prerecorded sessions, hold discussions, and reflect on the presentations through writing activities. On May 10th, Methacton High School's art students will be putting their creativity on display when they unveil their vision of a new and improved Ridge Pike. The students are participating in Lower Providence Township's Reimagine Ridge Pike Design Challenge. The purpose of the challenge is to help generate ideas and discussion regarding the comprehensive planning process. We can't wait to see what our students come up with. And finally, if you've been on the high school campus lately, you've probably noticed a huge sign celebrating the class of 2021. You can't quite see it from space, but the sign is still pretty impressive. It's located near the corner of Prewood Mill Road and the campus entrance. Very special thank you to the facilities department for building a custom frame for the sign. We hope our seniors, families, and the Methacton community enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And now for our superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Just want to reference the advisements that are listed on the agenda. And Ms. Kelly, it was, thank you for all your work on publicizing all the great things that we do. And certainly just want to also mention that, you know, for the last several months, we've been, you know, highlighting all the activities on a monthly basis that have been occurring. And Ms. Kelly has done a wonderful job of organizing that material. So you'll see another one coming up by the end of this month as well. So thank you, Ms. Kelly. And thank you, everyone, for all the reports and updates. That ends the reports for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. At this time, I will take public comment on board action items. So this is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda this evening. We ask you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. We may choose to respond to those matters following the conclusion of the comment section. We require that members of the public wanting to make comments, please pre-register by today. If you have pre-registered to speak and would like to do so, please raise your hand in the Zoom. Okay, I have, oh, it looks like I am not a host, Dr. Zerby. I can't let anyone in to speak. There we go. Okay, first up, we have Joe Rittenhouse.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful. Firstly, I want to thank and speak in favor of the five-day reopening plan. And just say, I'm really, just as the senior said, I'm very excited that we seem to finally be turning a corner to a safe and exciting transition back to some normalcy. Additionally, I'd just like to ask that we look as to further timelines and benchmarks associated with what that transition means going forward. I've also was approached by members of the Methacton Theater and Music Community over the past couple of days in concern to what five-day return to school will mean for concerts, plays, and musicals. I know that there's a lot of hesitancy to get back into the building, and so I wanted to suggest timeline and weather permitting, that some thought be put into kind of some outdoor productions, concerts. I know me as an actor, I reveled in the fact of doing Shakespeare in the Park in college and throughout my career. So I think it'd be something that'd be really great to give the kids a chance to see, a group of people see their work. And then last week, I spoke in opposition to one of the texts that is up to vote for night. That would be Eric Foner's Give Me Liberty, sixth edition, both volumes, one and two compiled. I don't want to rehash exactly everything, I just want to say that my opposition stems from, Eric Foner is listed as the Hoover Institute is a prime example of how not to teach US history in 2021. He is also listed at the Horowitz Freedom Foundation as having wildly radical views on race. Karl Marx, America, very openly biased and questionably anti-Semitic. Specific chapters involving race policing, Japanese internment, slavery, civil rights, George Wallace, Trayvon Martin, Michael Brown, include openly framed opinions and some outright racist assumptions. One statement on 10, page 1049, it's a chapter, it says, "A polarized nation." It says, "There's a racial component to lacking of intelligence," which I found abhorrent. I own a copy of the book, and I'm just sad to say that in my conversations with the district, I was actually only one of four people who reviewed the textbook since March 24th. And there was only one parent who reviewed the textbook, it seems. There was no mention of anybody on the board reviewing it, so I just wanted to ask, is, I'm unaware of if there's a separate time or place where the board reviews it, so please correct me. I also want to say that Dr. Walsh has been absolutely wonderful in his communication in regards to the contents of the book. He spoke to some of the teaching staff and reviewed that, yes, in his confirmation, the book did conter, did in fact have a bias or a perspective, but teachers teaching it would promote and provide supplemental information to bias and misinformation presented within the book. Now, I thought that would be like super comforting, but it's actually a little bit more concerning. I think that the process that we go into reviewing these books could be changed, and I want to encourage the board going forward to think about that. The idea of just trust us, it'll work out, it kind of scares me a little bit. So the questions asked, did the board read the book? Do you endorse the contents of the book? In my opinion, a vote of yes on this particular book means, as Thomas More said, silence is one consent. Solutions, possibly extend the time period in which this book could be reviewed by the public. Ask for a cross-section of parents to review the book and submit material submitted to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. There are many other texts that I recommended. I think that there are many different ways we could go about this. I think that the way the process reviewed doesn't give a lot of access to most members of the public. So I think in the 21st century, we just need to be a little bit more open and accessible for people to review. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next I have Brian Earnshaw.
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. First, regarding item eight, board policy, item one. I ask this question again, and I'm wondering, when will the board resume in-person meetings? What's going to be required for that to happen? Are there certain benchmarks that you're expecting to meet, certain vaccination levels, or what? Or are we just going to do virtual only in perpetuity? So I'd appreciate an answer to that question. On the list of bills, I note, again, this month, a significant amount of legal fees. I also note that Mr. Booker's forecast presentation that, to date, legal fees are forecasted to be $950,000 over budget. And if I heard correctly, that would mean legal fees spending would amount to 1.4 million, which is 1.3% of the annual budget, which is just an extraordinary number. And that apparently is not even all in, because Mr. Booker seemed to indicate that there's more legal fees to be included. But if it's a forecast for the full year, I didn't quite understand why those aren't in the forecast. So it's questioned the, you know, accuracy of the forecast as well. And regarding legal fees, I've not heard anything. There's supposed to be a review of them at the finance committee meeting this month, there wasn't. And I'm just wondering what steps the board is taking or will be taking to get these legal fees under control? Because spending, you know, over 1% of the budget is just, as I said, extraordinary. Regarding item 10E, the resolution regarding the pay and payoff of the North Monco Technical Career Center Bond Series. I guess it's before, but nobody's ever told me what the interest rate is on that debt. I'd be interested to hear that. Also, in Mr. Booker's forecast presentation, he has a funding to pay off that debt for the district of 1.191 million. The resolution says that Methacton contributes $965,000. So if somebody could explain that difference of approximately 150,000 or so difference, I'd appreciate that. Regarding item 10F, the MCIU District Cost Plan, it references the amount of $626,000 for the next year. I'm wondering how that compares to the current year? And whether that amount's going up, down, staying flat, or just how that compares? Regarding supplemental contracts, item 11L2, if you could explain what the ACT 48 Committee is and why supplemental contracts are required for that? I agree with the concerns regarding the textbook. I did read part of that book online. I found a lot of opinion and bias in the sections I read. And the sections on current history reads more like an MSNBC interview than a high school textbook. And then, I think finally, regarding, under other 14D1, the SOAR program. I went back and looked at the presentation from last week's work session, and there was no indication of the cost of that program. The agenda item indicates that it's funded from CCEIS funds. So I'm wondering, are those funds a one-time contribution or grant for next school year? Or are they perpetual? Because I think you need to understand, it'd be good to understand if those costs, one, how much they are, and two, whether or not that's going to be layered into the budget if and when those funds expire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. And next I have Jessica Bradbury.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. First, I hope that the board approves the return-to-school plan for next year so that our students can be restored to a five-day of in-person educational model. Dr. Angstead had indicated the SOAR program was funded by a grant, and like Mr. Earnshaw, I do have a question about what the total cost will be and wondering if we will cover that. Regarding the proposed textbooks, is it possible in the future to revisit how we make these books available for review? Maybe allowing evening and weekend hours so that it is more accessible to the public? As I mentioned last week, I especially liked the sixth-grade world cultures and geography book, and I think our youngest learners will really enjoy the newsletter format of the materials for grades K through five. We are fortunate to live in one of the greatest countries in the world, and we've made great strides in recent years to celebrate the diverse backgrounds of people in our community. In the four minutes that I'm given right now to speak on voting matters, I will not be able to elaborate on all of my concerns on the AP History book. But the author downplayed some great tragedies like Hurricane Katrina and 9/11, instead highlighting his own political viewpoints and criticizing our government, overshadowing the sadness and horror of the number of American lives lost during those two events. He uses the book to demonize the men and women that serve us in law enforcement, who were the true heroes that rushed into the chaos on 9/11 to save lives. As people with diverse backgrounds, we will always have diverse thoughts, beliefs, and ideals. We will not always agree, but it is through dissent and respectful conversation that we collaboratively work together to shape the future for our children. Over the past week, you've heard from members of the public that the author writes for a radical left-wing publications. He embraces Marxist ideals. He was even raised in a family of communist sympathizers. I'm wondering, and could we hear from the board members on their opinions as they read the AP US History book? I noted the administration highlights his Pulitzer Prize to justify its selection. A Pulitzer Prize like an Oscar or an Emmy is just a self-serving marketing tool for the industry. The board that presides over the judging process is comprised of media execs, reporters, university faculty, and other notoriously progressive people. This award is not given based on high standards of objectivity as an indicator of excellence or achievement. If we are to uphold a commitment as a district to create an apolitical and safe environment for all of our children, could we consider one of the other 19 books on the list provided by the AP College Board as a better selection instead of Give Me Liberty, a book filled with political propaganda? Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Chun Ling Ma.
Hi Chun Ling Ma, we're Sethor Township. I just want to comment on the AP History book also. I'm probably not the least one to comment on American history, because I did not grow up in this country. But my children will be educated in this country and will learn American history. I did not personally read the book, but I read some reviews on Amazon, it really concerns me. Basically, it assumes Americans want more government involvement in their lives than when the opposite is true. And also, a very important history, like 9/11, or a lot of the founding fathers ideologies were not really emphasized enough. Like Eisenhower and also Dubois, it was only mentioned twice in the book. It just, someone's version of a social injustice, but not an accurate history of the United States. Instead, it elaborates a lot on the minority persecution and slavery, women's suffering, but none of this balanced by the amazing things that have been accomplished by the American people. So it's, I agree with Ms. Bradbury, it's just more of the political propaganda. And I heard in the college, I saw in the college board, there were 20 books that were available for selection. And I don't know what's the justification for our Director of Curriculum to select this one. And I don't know if the board has reviewed the book in person, if you guys agree with why this will get picked. And another thing is also, I'll go back to Mr. Rittenhouse's suggestion. I think this process should be probably delayed with more parents involved, with more reviews, so the board can get a more balanced idea of whether this book, textbook is fit for our AP History course. Another topic I want to touch upon is, I'd like to know when the in-person meeting can resume. And I don't see any technical difficulty blocking it. I appreciate right now we have the availability of having online Zoom meeting with a lot of people who cannot attend in person can also dial in. But at the same time, I think we also need an in-person interaction. And I think the board can do both versions available, make it available to the public. I just don't know if there's any technical difficulty blocking that. So if you can, if you guys can give me an idea when the in-person can resume, that'd be really great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Kelly Mann.
Hello, I just wanted to talk to, in regards to Give Me Liberty.
Before you get started, I should have said this at the very beginning. If you could just introduce yourself by your name and municipality.
Oh, sure. My name is Kelly Mann, and I live in Lower Providence.
Thank you.
I also wanted to talk in regards to the textbook, The Give Me Liberty. This was just brought to my attention this past week when some pictures of pages in the textbook were messaged to me by other concerned parents. When I read them, I was shocked. Instead of facts, I was reading paragraphs of heavily threaded, one-sided opinion politics and propaganda. I was not aware that viewing textbooks prior to approval was an option, and that's partly my fault, I could look into that. But if that information could be relayed to parents, I think you would have a lot more people on this meeting objecting. I guarantee many parents are probably not aware that that is an option. As a parent of students, I have two Methacton students and one that I'll have a third. I'm very concerned about what I see about this, and I will definitely look into future textbooks. In closing, I wanted to ask the board members, along with the other people that spoke prior to me, did they read this? In closing, I wanted to ask the board members, along with the other people that spoke prior to me, did they read this textbook? Did they read what is in question and what we are concerned about? Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Sandy Katz. Whenever you're ready.
Hi Sandy Katz, Lower Providence. I just want to say thank you. I cannot express exactly how I'm feeling right now. The presentation, thank you to the board, Dr. Zerby, Dr. Angstad, Ms. Drummond, Mr. Navarette for referring to both the evaluation done by Dr. Costin and the training that we brought to Mathacton just in February on inclusive practices. The presentation today on the kindergarten full day program, I know that's not up for a decision today. However, the plan to restructure staff and services and weave in inclusive practices is excellent. Research has shown that inclusive practices benefits outcomes for all students, children with and without abilities. This plan provides access to all and all the appropriate supports and services that our kids with special needs need. It gives them access to the expertise of the general ed and special ed teachers in the classroom as opposed to sending them down the hall. As Mr. Navarette mentioned, and you know, the time wasted sending them down the hall. They have the experts right in the classroom with them. Access to their peers with opportunity to model learning and behavior from their peers. Our kids are our own best models. Access to the curriculum because the teachers can collaborate to make accommodations and modifications for their students in their homeroom class. And many a times what I've learned is accommodations and modifications that have been made for my daughter benefit most of the kids in the classroom. Above all, children with diverse abilities will develop a strong sense of belonging and not feel like the occasional visitor to the general ed classroom. The icing on this cake will be the board's approval of the plan to bring SOAR to our elementary school staff and children. So our teachers have on-hand expertise from the mental health team to provide social, emotional, and behavioral support for all of our children. Again, I just want to say thank you. This has been a long effort, and I know a labor of love of many of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. Next I have Michael Ryan. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. I just want to make a quick comment in regards to the textbook that's in question. I think would be important for Dr. Walsh when this comes up in the agenda to maybe go over the process of how a textbook is adopted and, you know, how that moves through. You know, it starts in the curriculum office. It needs final approval from Dr. Walsh before it even gets to Dr. Zerby. Dr. Zerby would then need to vet it as well in order to even get it on the agenda for this evening to be viewed by the board. This was put up on the agenda in last month's meeting, discussing the timeframe. The textbooks are allowed to be reviewed by the public. I just think it's important to go through that process, that this isn't just a school board decision to one school board member, you know, picked out a book and decided, hey, this is what we're going to do. This comes from the experts. And I think that's the important thing to remember here is, you know, I wasn't an expert with COVID, so I wouldn't speak, you know, to the science behind COVID. I'm not an expert when it comes to textbook selection, but part of having the administration is relying on your Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, relying on your superintendent to make the proper recommendations to the board. So I just hope that during the part of the meeting where we go over this, that they kind of go over through the process here, you know, the proper means of doing this. And, you know, I greatly appreciate the the structure that is in place to go over these things. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I see no other hands raised, so I believe that will end our public comment portion of this evening. And I will now move on with the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the suspension of Board Policy 006.2 with specific regard to the limitation on the number of directors participating electronically?
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, in a second.
Winners.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for the work session on March 16th and the regular board meeting on March 23rd is attached?
I guess.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, in a second.
Navarette.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Fiscal items, Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight for your approval, we have the list of bills, treasures, report, budgetary transfers, the North Monaco Technical Career Center Budget, Resolution 21-02, which is in regards to paying off the North Monaco Technical Career Center lease, MCIU District Cost Plan, the earned income tax credit for the volunteer firefighters, the food service management agreement is a one-year extension with Aramark, and a general supply bid awards.
Does anyone want to take any of these fiscal items separately? All right, then I will take a motion to approve all items listed under number 10.
McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, in a second.
Navarette.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Any comments from the board? Seeing none.
I have my hand up. Sorry, I'm trying not to call out. Sorry. I got yelled at for calling out, which is true. There were two questions regarding finance. The difference between the IU expenditure, the 6,600,000 this year versus last year, do you know the difference? Right now, if you don't, Mr. Booker, that's okay. But if you did.
I don't know the difference off the top of my head. However, the number is based on students and the students' needs.
Okay, thank you. And the other finance question was the North Monaco interest rate percentage, I believe.
Weighted average coupon on the North Monaco Technical Career Center lease is 2.41%.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other questions?
Yep.
Mr. Winners?
Yeah, I think there was also a question in the differential between the 965 and the 1.2 million dollars. I believe that's the amount difference it has related to state refund. Is that correct?
That'll be, that'll be the plan con numbers. I haven't gotten final numbers to put into the forecast, so I can't really give that information as I don't have it available.
But the difference would be related to the state portion of that reimbursement. Is that correct?
That's the plan, that's the plan con amount.
Yes, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, fiscal items carry nine zero. Moving on to personnel, Dr. Sergini.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. For your consideration this month, we have the following personnel items. We have three resignations professional, two of which I spoke about last week. When I thanked Ms. Linda Wilkinson for her 18 years of service to the students of Mathacton and Ms. Barbara Valerio for her 32 years of service. This week, we are also adding Ms. Mary Ellen Barbuto and thanking her for her 33 years of service to the students of Mathacton. And we wish Linda, Barb, and Mimi all the very best in their retirements. We have two resignations classified, both of which are for retirement. And last week, I thanked both Chris Boyle and Janice Stickley for their service to the students of Mathacton. We have one employment administrative. We have two uncompensated leaves professional, two uncompensated leaves classified, a series of supplemental contracts, several of which are retroactive due to needs that we became aware of after the last meeting. And also, we have this month the addition of four volunteers to be added to the district approved volunteer list. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Would anyone like to take any of the personnel items separately? All right, then I will take a motion to approve all items listed under number 11, personnel.
Reese. Sorry.
That's okay. I got you, Andrea, Ms. Reese. And a second, Mr. Winners. Comments from the board? Ms. Reese?
Um, Mr. Sergini, I know we've had different, a couple retirements each month, and I know we, because of that, we always wait to acknowledge all of the retirements, if I'm correct, in the spring. Is that still the plan?
That's correct, Ms. Reese. We are planning that for an upcoming month.
Okay, thank you. And then there was a question. I know about Act 48 for the supplemental contracts, I believe, you know, planning professional development, but I don't know if an administrator has a better answer to that question.
Thank you. I can certainly answer that. Act 48 is from the year 2000 or required the beginning in the year 2000. All professional educators would have to continue with their professional education development over the course of their service in the profession and as a means by which to keep their certifications active. In order to accomplish that, they need to either take six credits of an approved coursework by, in courses that are approved by PDE. Those can include graduate or doctoral level courses or also courses through the Pennsylvania Inspired Leadership Series that is offered through PDE. But the majority of our staff accumulates Act 48 credits through here at Mathacton School District. Then we do have a committee that consists of educators across all the levels of K to 12 education as well as our administration. And those meetings are generally held after the school day. So our teachers who serve on that particular committee and meet on a monthly basis are compensated for their time after the school day.
Thank you.
There's also a board representative that's part of that committee, the Act 48 Committee as well.
Correct. I'm sorry, Madam President. You're correct.
No, that's okay. I was just adding on there, giving my two cents. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Navarette.
Yeah, just a quick question. On, how come we're just paying a basketball coach now?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Navarette. I certainly apologize. We were in a situation where the same individual served in two different capacities and was compensated for the other capacity, the way that the schedules worked out. This individual was able to serve as both a JV and a freshman coach because the schedules for both practices and games did not overlap. Unfortunately, she was compensated for the other season, but we came to realize that the compensation did not go through at the correct time in December and January for the other role in which she filled. Great, thanks. That makes sense. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the personnel items as listed? Hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Curriculum and Programs, Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Attached to tonight's agenda are recommendations for various textbooks and resources that is part of our ongoing curriculum review process. The textbooks have been on display for public review as part of our practice since March 24th. And to date, four community members have come into view the textbooks proposed, and we have received three emails regarding the AP US History textbook. I shared that specific feedback with the AP teacher who vetted this textbook along with the Social Studies Department Coordinator and Chair, the Secondary Curriculum Supervisor, as well as the Building Principal, and made them aware of the concerns that were raised. The teacher will use the textbook along with other sources to provide a balanced perspective of the viewpoints to align with the rigorous AP US History prescribed curriculum. To that end, it is the recommendation that this textbook, along with all other resources and curriculum listed in tonight's agenda, be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Given the conversations that we've had already, I'm going to presume that we're going to take 12A3 separately, so I will take a motion to approve number 12, Curriculum and Programs, Item A, 1 through 8, with the exception of number 3, so 1, 2, and 4 through 8. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Winners.
Reese, a second.
Ms. Reese. Okay, any comments from the board on those items? Seeing none. All those in favor?
This.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I thought that, I know that, Dr. Walsh, you read through the principle of what was done in the last 30 days. But could you also walk through the principle was what is the identification and what other support mechanisms you have in choosing all these books generically? Sorry.
Absolutely, actually, Mr. Winner. So the curriculum review process, it's an ongoing process, and this started about a year and a half ago with the curriculum writing. First thing we do is we write the curriculum based on the PA Core and academic standards. And in this particular case with AP, AP is actually written from the college board. They prescribe the curriculum. Teachers have to go through a thorough training in order to teach the course. So that is part of the vetting process to begin with. The college board does provide the approved curriculum. Then we find a resource that matches up best with the curriculum. And as in many cases, we look at various resources, the department, the coordinators, the teachers who are teaching that prescribe curriculum. And then they make recommendations. There's a textbook evaluation form that's filled out. It's then signed off by the department chair, ultimately signed off by the building principal, and then the curriculum supervisor of that department. And this was about a six-month process. This started back in the fall, and we have now brought this forward at the March Ed Committee meeting. As is always, we leave all curricular and program materials on display for at least 30 days, and then we get that final approval from the board. So this has been about a year process. It started before I came here, and the textbook recommendation vetting took place back in about October, November as part of our budgeting process. So this is something that the teachers do not take lightly. I respect their professionalism. They are in the trenches every day, teaching this curriculum, teaching the materials. And again, it's not just the textbook that drives the curriculum. It's the resources, it's the open source documents, it's the conversations, it's the debates. And that's what makes it richer and deeper for our students. And in particular, AP is a college-level prep course, and ultimately, it's about the exam, the assessment at the end of the year that is given. So it leads up to the culminating activity, which is that AP exam, which is just around the corner for all our students. I hope that helps describe the process.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any other comments on items 12A, 1, 2, 4 through 8? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. And now I'll take a motion to approve item 12A3, Give Me Liberty, the AP US History text.
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there a second?
Winners.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Comments from the board? Mr. Winners?
Yeah, I mean, I really, I do appreciate the community looking at this book, but I think there's a conceptual thing that maybe I'm not in agreement on. As Dr. Walsh sort of indicated, these are books that have been vetted by the staff and looked at in different ways. But the book in itself is not the entire teaching. The teaching is the dialogue around these subjects. And the principle, and I have, if somebody wants to know, I did look at the AP US History course and examination description, all whatever inch of paper. I also looked online in a purchased version of a PDF of the item of the book in question. I do believe there's some things that that we should trust the teaching and the dialogue. These are 10 to 11, I assume, actually 11th and 12th graders. I'm not sure exactly. I think they're 11th and 12th primarily. These are individuals that are independent thinkers as well. And the principle of propaganda and the words that have been used, Marxist, Communist. Interesting, I believe there's a section in here about the red scare. So I really believe that we, we are, there is an overreaction towards, you know, some opinions in this book. some opinions in this book. The whole principle of this book, as I understand it, is to discuss how great America is because it continues to try to be better and try to reevaluate itself through all its issues through time. And this most recent edition, the author talks about, uh, what it is to be an American and around the issues that are specifically around immigration and some, and incorporating more of those into the different chapters throughout the book. Um, there, I'm sure there are in things in there that I don't like. I am sure there's things in other books that I don't like. But the principle of a book by itself being to be all of our how we teach in Methacton, to me, is, is not what we are, and I have no problem, uh, voting for this, and I'm sure somebody will put my name against some type of quote of the book and say, that's what I voted for. I'm voting for the principle of, of education and the principle of how good our staff can have a dialogue with our students and make them independent learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winters.
Um, I would, go ahead. Sorry, um, I, um, after we, we received an email before the meeting last week, and as soon as I received that email, I just confirmed again with administration that we went through the process we always go through. I just wanted to make sure, and they did, they said yes. And then when we received the commentary last, uh, at the work session, I was like, ooh, and I, so I, I went and saw what some other districts were using, and I, and I, I was very concerned because in six years on the board and six years on the Education Committee, I hadn't heard anything like this. There was some, uh, conversation about the elementary ELA series, but there was never, you know, such pushback on a book. And it concerned me because it's a big deal. It's a big deal as a, as a board, you know? You, you vote on the budget, that's a big deal. You vote on policy, that's a big deal, and the textbooks are a big deal. So I reached out to the author because I wanted to let him ask him what he thought, and he very nicely, um, responded to me, so I'd like to read that to everybody. Dear Ms. Reese, it's long, so bear with me. Thank you for your message. It is difficult to respond to charges that have no basis in fact, but let me try. If you will excuse me for being a modest, my long career as a teacher and scholar of history has been honored across the political spectrum. I am one of only two persons who've been elected president of the three major professional organizations of historians, the American Historical Association, Organization of American Historians, and Society of American Historians. These organizations are hardly known for promoting pro-communist or politically biased interpretations of American history. My books have won, among other accolades, the Pulitzer Prize, the Bancroft Prize twice, Los Angeles Times Book Prize, and many other awards. They have been enthusiastically reviewed by writers from the left, right, and center. In the National Review, A Bastion of Modern Conservatism, for example, the reviewer declared my book, "The Story of American Freedom, On Which Give Me Liberty Is Based", "Approaches Brilliance." I mention all this because I pride myself on objectivity when I am writing. Of course, I hold political opinions, as does every author of a work of history, but the contents of Give Me Liberty are based on my extensive research in historical documents and on reading the scholarly books of other historians. I strive to be fair-minded to all outlooks. Indeed, the underlying theme of Give Me Liberty is that the understanding of freedom, the central idea in our political culture, has been contested throughout our history. And thus, the book explains how Americans of all backgrounds and persuasions have thought about and attempted to achieve freedom. Each chapter contains an insert juxtaposing two statements about freedom from its historical time period. The point is to enable students to think for themselves about how they and other Americans define this key idea. This is the opposite of attempting to impose my own outlook on students. Give Me What, Give Me Liberty is widely used in high schools, community colleges, and four-year colleges, in red states and blue states, and by liberal and conservative teachers. In the preface, I haven't, I haven't included my email address, and I invite students to share reactions with me. I have received numerous emails from teachers and students, some questioning one or another point in the book, others urging me to devote more attention to an issue of importance to them. I have never received a complaint that the book is politically biased, or, on the contrary, many teachers and students have praised it as uneven-handed and fair-minded. Equally important, many students from throughout the country have written to me to say that they really enjoyed reading the book. Recently, I received a handwritten letter from a high school student simply saying, "Thank you for your book. Give Me Liberty is probably the only textbook I have actually enjoyed reading." Another recent letter states, "As a high school sophomore in US history, I just wanted to thank you for writing such an engaging, comprehensive, and interesting textbook." And one final letter from a high school senior, "Your book not only taught me a great deal about American history, but also inspired me to continue to study high, history in college. Before reading your book, I had little understanding of history as a vital and dynamic narrative." I could go on, but my point is that I strive to write in a clear, accessible manner, and students seem to find the book engaging. There is no point in assigning even the best textbook if students do not read it. Of course, the key to the study of history is the teacher in the classroom, not the textbook. But many teachers have thanked me for making their job that much easier by arousing a deep interest in history among their students. One of the students quoted above also praises my commitment to social justice. Give Me Liberty introduces students not simply to presidents and captains of industry, but also to previously marginalized groups. It highlights the struggles against slavery for women's rights and for dignity in the workplace as essential parts of the history of freedom in this country. This is not because it offers a negative account of American history, but because if they want to understand the tumultuous world we live in today, students need to be familiar with those Americans who have struggled to make this a more just society. What could be more pro-American than that? Best wishes, Eric Foner.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other comments from the board? Ms. Drummond?
Yes, I, I had great concern when I heard that, um, the author could be anti-Semitic and also was possibly postulating debunked theories about race and intelligence. So after the meeting on Tuesday, as Dr. Walsh can attest, I went over and I obtained the book on Wednesday. And, um, I would just like to mention a couple comments of note. Um, one is that, uh, Eric Foner was born in New York City, the son of Jewish parents. Um, so is himself Jewish. Um, and, uh, uh, one of the commenters made a comment about how Hurricane Katrina was referenced in the book. Um, and I will just, uh, read us a short excerpt that talks about, and, and I guess in the, in the context of saying that the death toll was not mentioned, um, appropriately, the book does say, "Vast numbers of people, most of them poor African-Americans, remained abandoned amid the floodwaters. Bodies floated in the streets, and people died in city hospitals and nursing homes. By the time aid began to arrive, damage stood at 80 billion. The death toll was around 1,500, and two-thirds of the city population had, has been displaced." Um, the, the comment that, that gave me most concern was about this, you know, about a race theory, and I was unable to find anything in the book, um, after perusal, about a race theory, except for the following that, uh, describes tweets issued by President Trump, um, which promoted his ideas and insulted political opponents. Now, this was on page 915 of the book. The caller referenced a page 1049, so, um, I'm not sure that that community member has the most current addition. Um, but it talks about, uh, insulted his political opponents, critics, and even political allies, such as his Attorney General Jeff Sessions. Often, his tweets had a racial component. He declared basketball great LeBron James and Maxine Waters, a black member of Congress, lacking in intelligence. So this was the only thing I could find in the book that talked about race and intelligence. And since this is properly contextualized, in my opinion, I'm comfortable with this book. And I, and I also want to say to the, uh, teachers and the administrators in the committee who have chosen this book and selected this book, and I, I just want to, you know, say, Methacton School District has such a strong AP program. We have a great success with our AP program, our AP testing success, our students and, you know, who go on to further their education this way and who enter college with a number of credits under their belt because of our success, and I, I trust in this continued process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Are there any other comments from the board? Ms. Cancrow?
You know, I don't have a long-winded, like, I, I appreciate everybody's information. I, I respect the process. I just, I feel in this, I do have to say that the, the last chapter, A Divided Nation, I just didn't feel it had that balanced perspective of viewpoints of US history. So for that, it just really doesn't make me feel comfortable. I, I do appreciate how we are going to provide other resources to make this become a balance, but, um, for this, that's why I'm not going to be voting for this book. But I appreciate everybody's perspectives on this, on this call and, and the administration staff and, and the process that we put it through, and that's exactly why we do it. But, but, um, for me, I just did not, I don't feel comfortable with that part of the book.
Thank you, Ms. Cancrow. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Navaret?
Yeah, just to, I guess, follow, um, I do appreciate, you know, I, Paul, I think, um, stated it far more eloquently than, than I could. Um, but I did indeed answer the question that was asked. Um, I did, uh, I did review this textbook, uh, after the concerns that were raised last week, and I appreciate, Dr. Walsh, uh, you sharing, uh, the complaints that we received from the community. I think that helped, uh, put some context, um, and point me to the right spots in the books that people were looking at. So I appreciate the effort that the administration and our teachers have put into this. I trust their judgment. Part of, uh, part of offering, uh, a diverse course load is, uh, offering a diverse set of viewpoints for our students to consider, so, um, look forward to, uh, continued, uh, success of our AP programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navaret. Any other comments from the board?
I know the question was asked about, um, in reference to board members reviewing the textbook, and I do want to say, I think all of us on here review the textbook, right? So this is the part of the process. The textbook is available for parents within our community and also available for board members to review, and we all have access to the textbook and have reviewed the contents of it. I know from my experience in looking at it, I thought it was one-sided. I guess, in my opinion, I was looking for more of it, right? Which is, with content that probably wouldn't get on to taking a different level. So if it was more like on, I believe they started off with Indian-American history, and you, you're looking for a little bit more, but given what the AP course is designed and how it's supposed to be, it's supposed to expose you to different things. And I think in the end, based on the way it's structured and the material, supplementary materials provided by the teachers, that students will have an engaging discussion, just because I feel like it brings a lot of what we are seeing in our American history, and it brings a lot of current events in, in, introduce a lot of the current events in the textbook. So I think it should be fine.
All right, any other comments? Okay, so, um, I'm going to ask for-
Can I just make a comment real quick?
Oh, sure.
I did want to state that, um, I, I did take a look at the textbook also. Um, I'm glad that that was provided to us electronically in the way that it was. Um, I have, I, you know, I, I did not see bias the way that other people did when they reviewed this. I thought that there were um, criticisms on both sides, on, especially in that last chapter that's being referenced a lot by the public. Um, my daughter's in the class right now. She has an excellent teacher who is doing an incredible job with these students, and I think we have a lot of success with this class and the AP program, and I will support the administration in this recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. So with that, I'm going to move to a roll call vote. Um, Ms. Cancrow?
No.
Ms. Drummond?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Navaret?
Yes.
Ms. Purdue?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
And myself, also, yes. So with a vote of eight to one, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for all of your work, and, um, thank you, Dr. Walsh, and the entire curriculum team for your work in, in selecting this text. I have every faith that this will continue to prepare our students well for the AP exam and, and future successes.
Thank you.
So moving on with our agenda. Um, now we have item 12B, new programs in curriculum. We have, um, three new programs being funded by the Methacton Education Foundation, which is terribly exciting. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the three items under new programs in curriculum?
Navaret.
I heard McGinnis first. Is there a second?
Drummond?
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Um, on policy, we have six policies up for our first read, and we have 12 policies for a second read, which means that they would be approved this evening. Uh, so may I have a motion to approve these 12 policies as listed?
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Is there a second?
Drummond?
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Um, under gifts and donations, we have a gift from the Vassalusa family of a flute. We have no trips. We have a dissertation study to approve. Um, and we have the SOAR program, and, oh goodness, we have a lot of things to approve here. Um, actually, doctors, everyone, and I let you go through these.
Sure. So we, we have, uh, the dissertation study as, as mentioned, uh, and that, all that information is, uh, listed on, on the attachments. The SOAR program, Dr. Engstad presented this, uh, uh, last week, and so maybe this is for providing, uh, support for behavioral and mental health supports into our elementary schools, starting with the 2122 school year. Uh, the, the, the funds and, Dr. Engstad, let's see if we can answer some of the questions that, that were out there. Uh, so, uh, the, the CCEIS funds are actually funds that are originally allocated to us through our, uh, uh, IDEA funding, which, as a result of the audit, uh, requires us to, uh, designate a certain portion of that funding in order to, uh, uh, address the, the issues that the audit has, has, uh, designated. So, Dr. Engstad, those, those funds are in about how much at this moment in time?
So for every year that we've been required to, um, withhold, it's 15% of our IDEA Part B funding. So every year, we've been putting aside about $128,000 to $140,000. These funds can only be used to provide early intervening services, and so when we proposed, uh, we put together the proposal for the SOAR program, I did reach out to the Bureau of Special Education to make sure that it met the letter of the law to use those funds for this purpose. Um, the response from the state was absolutely, they thought the program was a great opportunity to really address not only inclusive practices for any chances of disproportionality, and we will continue to be, um, setting aside those compensator, or, I'm sorry, the comprehensive coordinated funds until we start addressing the matter. So we will be setting aside that same 15% next year, and most likely the year following, so that we need to start using the funds, um, as they're prescribed.
And it, and it is, it is our intent, uh, at least to have the SOAR program operational with the behavioral, uh, with the third-party behavioral supports in the classrooms for a minimum of two-year period. We've, we indicated that at the presentation, and we will evaluate after that two-year period, meaning the first year being very intensive, and then there's a titration schedule, uh, that Dr. Engstad referred to, that we would ease off so that our own teachers start taking, uh, you know, taking those modeled behaviors and implementing themselves over, over time, so that we become the resident experts. Uh, so it isn't designed to be- So it isn't designed to be a program that will be in perpetuity. So th- this is a proper, I'll call it articulation of those funds that are, that are our one-time funds that, uh, over these next couple of years will be used to address the, the challenge. The next item is this Summer Student Programs. Again, this was, uh, shared, uh, last week by, uh, Dr. Walsh and team. Please note that there were some, uh, modifications. And, Dr. Walsh, we just mentioned the modification based on the comments from the work session that we added here.
Absolutely, Doctors Erby. What we added was we made sure that there would be a site coordinator available for the on, um, for the students, especially at the grades seven to 12, who needed additional support. And we will already have a site coordinator for our intervention program and a site coordinator for our supplemental program. So there will be, um, a live adult available for anyone who wants to drop in or just needs online support. In addition, we'll be providing, um, some services to our families over the summer on social and emotional well-being. We'll be putting information out, um, as they are scheduled throughout the summer. And they will be, uh, recorded for those parents who cannot make it due to vacations or, or work schedules or such. And then also, there will be some central behavioral health and reach services for current students in the program that will also be able to address social and emotional wellness. But that will be determined by the clinician for those students who are currently in those programs. So we will definitely be addressing the SCLs, as was discussed last week, as well as onsite support.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. And we also highlighted in the revised document that our counselors, uh, there's some intervention with our counselors as well. Is that correct?
Yes, they are available throughout the summer. They can schedule any appointments that might be necessary as the counselors rotate through, um, with their summer hours and summer days by appointment.
Excellent. So those, those are, those were modifications. And the only financial modification, I believe, it was a, was it a $5,000 change from last week as a result of-
That's correct.
Okay. And that's all spelled out in the revised attached document. The next item is the 21 Offseason Practice Games Camps and Clinics, as presented by Dr. Spiewack. Nothing has changed between, uh, the presentation last week and until now. And then, of course, we have the Instructional Health and Safety Plan. Both of those plans are attached for your, your approval this evening. Again, uh, it, it should be real clear for everyone that we'll be moving forward with the instructional plan and planning for, uh, the implementation of the five-day in-person as well as, uh, the alternative, uh, uh, all, all online option, uh, with an, with an option to make a change at the, in mid-January as presented. Uh, the, the, there is some likelihood that by July, we'll be seeing some other recommendations, uh, from the CDC that we might have to consider as part of the Health and Safety Plan. I don't know exactly what they would be, but as, uh, history has shared us, uh, we know, things change, uh, on a regular basis. And, uh, you know, we will, we will make those recommendations where appropriate and when appropriate prior to the, the school year, uh, start. We did, uh, provide the list of, uh, the distancing for classrooms, uh, to the board just today. So, uh, all of them, as I indicated in the, um, meeting last week, uh, while it talks about, the safety plan talks about a greater than three-foot distancing, uh, there is not a classroom that we're recommending to be occupied that would be less than, I believe. And, Dr. Engstad, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's four by four?
That's correct, Doctor Erby.
Yeah, with, with some classrooms four by six and some, you know, so there's, there's a lot of, uh, variation. Now, we'll be also sharing that same list, uh, with the, uh, the, the leadership of the Methacton Education Association, uh, just so as we go into this, uh, process and this change, um, everyone's very familiar with what we're going to do. And we'll be including that list as part of the, uh, selection booklet, uh, for parents when that selection process begins. And I believe it's in early June. If, if it's not June, is it June 1 through the 7th? I think that, I think that's okay. If not, it, just read the, the timeline and the presentation. But, but that's, that's when that is. And then the last, uh, two items is the MCIU representative. Ms. Reese has been serving as the representative for the, the, the last, uh, uh, I guess, few years. Oh, just one year? Okay. And, uh, and, and does it rotate? She doesn't know, I don't know. It doesn't matter. It, it's, the, the position is up for reelection. So there'll be a, a requirement for a nomination and then a determination by this board to submit a, a name to the, uh, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. And the last is a, uh, agreement for, uh, uh, a settlement agreement and a release of, an agreement with student 210434.
Thank you, Doctors Erby. So seeing as we do not have a name yet for the nomination, I'm going to say that we'll take a motion to approve items listed under other 14A through G and I, if that's okay with the board. So is there a motion?
Reese?
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And I'll take Mr. Winters with the second. Comments from the board?
I already commented last week on SOAR, but, um, since last week, I've been sharing the, uh, program and, and what Dr. Engstad and her colleagues have put together with many people I know in education. And they, they just were like, wow, going down to elementary. They were, they were just super impressed and super excited. And they asked me to forward the information and, and it, it just felt so good. And then hearing Ms. Katz, um, and her understanding of inclusion and, and that SOAR and inclusion practices all just will come together. It just is one of those really nice board moments. So thank you again to, um, Dr. Engstad and everybody involved.
Ditto.
Agree.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of items A through G and I? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, and now I will ask for a nomination for the MCIU representative. Mr. Summers, do I have to have a motion for the item itself or can I just take a nomination?
You can just take a nomination.
Okay, thank you. Um, so do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Andrea Reese.
Second.
Okay. Um, are there any other nominations? Any comments on the nominations?
Thank you, Andrea, for your work.
Thank you. And I would just say, sorry, I, the last year has been such a blur that Dr. Erby is correct. It is two years, but I just haven't walked into the IU in quite a while. We are still having our meetings through Zoom and, uh, but my picture is still on the wall. And, uh, I would be happy to continue there and all the great work they do.
Yeah, a- a- as a comment, I, I filled out, I think, Ms. Hackett's, uh, term. And I think it was only maybe six months or so. But it is a fantastic, uh, experience if other board members at some point want to, uh, have contact with the other, uh, 18 districts in Montgomery County and, and really get an understanding of what a fantastic IU we have in Montgomery County. It's certainly something that, uh, is a, is a pleasant, uh, board position. And it really is a rewarding and really fantastic, uh, organization to be supporting as a board member.
All right. So then we have, um, a nomination for Andrea Reese with a seat on the IU board for a term of three years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries nine zero. And we have our dates for our meetings for next month. Is there anything for old business? Anything for new business? Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, I would just like to take a note of, um, George Marinco, who was the head football coach, assistant football coach, uh, at Methacton for over 40 years. Looks like Coach is, um, coming to some end-of-life issues. And there's a GoFundMe page out there. But, uh, I can speak for myself that he was instrumental i- in teaching me how to work hard. And I know there was several generations of young men that, uh, benefited from his teaching. So everyone, keep them in your thoughts if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Anything else for new business?
Madam President, just to, uh, real quickly make the board aware, uh, tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock AM, uh, the United States Supreme Court will be hearing a case. It's BL versus Mahanoi Area School District, which is a Pennsylvania school district. It's a case involving the authority of school districts, um, to discipline students for off-campus speech and has significant, or could have significant implications of, uh, what authority the school district has for bullying, uh, behavior that may occur off-campus, inappropriate communications. It's, it's rare for the United States Supreme Court to issue a, to take a case involving school law issues. There have been a handful of them throughout the decades. But tomorrow morning at 10 AM, the, the court will be, uh, hearing argument in that case. Uh, and my understanding is it is streaming on, uh, C-SPAN's website, if anyone's interested, or the United States Supreme Court's website, uh, if any board members are interested in listening.
And given your commitment to education law, Mr. Summers, I expect you'll be watching with popcorn.
Yes.
Mr. Winters, is this, I, I thought I read it was only an audio feed. Is that correct?
That's correct. The US Supreme Court, uh, does not allow cameras in their court.
Um, I just will say, Ms. Hall has been sending me information about it because she is our, she sends me my homework. So, Ms. Hall, um, I have a very busy day to- tomorrow with school and, uh, Mespa and, um, uh, IU meeting. So if you could keep me posted, I would really, really, really appreciate it.
I think I'm going to let the legal experts give me a summary after it's all over.
And I know the Policy Committee has been watching this one for quite some time. It will be interesting to see what happens. Anything else for old business then, or new business? Okay, with that then, we will move on to Courtesy of the Floor. This is a time for members of the public to comment on any items that could come before the board at a future date, um, or matters just of general concern. We require members of the public to make, um, to pre-register by 5:00 PM today. Please keep your comments to four minutes or less, and if you could introduce yourself by name and municipality. So if you pre-registered to speak during Courtesy of the Floor, please raise your hand. Okay, Joe Rittenhouse?
Whenever you're ready.
Yes, I can.
Joe Rittenhouse, Lower Providence. First of all, thank you for the board for acknowledging that you have read the book in question that I was speaking about. I just wanted to address some certain points, uh, that I was kind of blown away with. I completely agree with Winter Sentiment, uh, Director Winter Sentiment, that, um, what is in the book and the quotes attributed to the book should be prescribed to the votes to the book. I, uh, to the section on race and intelligence, to, uh, Director Drummond's point, the presupposition of that comment assumes that race is bi- race and intelligence are biological. That is the cornerstone of every white supremacist that has ever existed in the United States and its horrible history when it comes to white supremacy, that, that comment in and of itself should be disqualifying for that book, um, including the comment that says, "Thus, two visions of America clashed, one based in exclusion and whiteness and the other in welcoming and diverse. Both were deeply rooted in the American experience." I can't think of a more polarizing sentence than that. So I, and politely, I don't think that the idea that supplemental, uh, additions to the book are, are, make up for the fact that it is the authority of the book, as the appeal to authority has been mentioned. I think I'm, minus the, the other members of the, uh, Methacton alum who are here, I think I'm the only person who's ever taken this class. And so I can truthfully say that I do believe that, uh, there's elements of this book that will be influenced in ways that I, I, I think the board should be aware of and the public should be aware of. And also to the point about, uh, I just thought it was very questionable and slightly unethical to reach out to the author in which you're paying to say here, "Yes, I'm good. Please approve my book. Now give me the money for the book." That's, I, I can't, uh, ethics 101. And then the other thing I just wanted to make aware, less dramatic, less important, but equal, uh, equally is like something that should be aware of is, um, currently I know that the Methacton School Board is streaming on, uh, YouTube. But the channel in itself, as of this moment, is in violations of the community guidelines or Terms of Service of YouTube. And I know that the board wants to continue, uh, virtual meetings using the service. But literally, it would take one, uh, this is, I mean, this is just me knowing the Terms of Service very well, is, it would literally take one comment to remove the entire, uh, YouTube channel's ability to livestream to the public. Being as, I think it's up till 2019, uh, we started listing the, uh, the YouTube videos and board meetings under the YouTube Kids Program or YouTube, uh, Children's Program. And because of the contents of some of the meetings, it act, we actually violate that very heavily. So if we, you know, we can fix that very easily by turning unlisted videos or videos that are as kids, uh, to regular YouTube. But I worry that, you know, you're going to get one or two people who are genuinely upset, hit the, this like button and report the comment as not being appropriate for children, and you'll lose the ability to stream to the public. So that's just something you should be aware of, um, as far as the Terms of Service go for YouTube Kids and how the YouTube videos are listed currently under the, under our YouTube channel. So I don't know if that's a separate, you want to make a separate channel just for the board so that it can be adult and keep all the concerts and stuff on one. But, uh, like, if, if the board's going to continue virtually, I think that that's something that has to be looked at before that privilege is, uh, lost because it's a third party. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have Shadai Darby.
Hello, I'm Shadai Darby, Lower Providence. I just wanted to come on and thank the, um, board for their consideration with the textbook. I am a 2017 alum and I was enrolled in the AP US History class. Um, and I thought the textbook was lacking when I took the class. So I'm very thankful for these, um, new updates for when my, um, younger siblings go through the class and other students as well. So thank you so much for your consideration and, um, I'm glad with this decision.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. And next we have Chunling Ma.
Chunling Ma, we're Sister Township. I just want to go back to that textbook, um, comments made by Ms. Winter and Ms. Reese. I, I don't understand the logic when Ms. Winter said they can supplement, uh, the course with other, uh, materials and it's up to the teacher to give the students a, a more balanced view of the history. If, if that's the point, uh, if that's the case, the why pick a textbook? And then why this textbook? And then why do you, like, if you think, uh, if you meant the textbook is biased and you expect, uh, the teacher to give a more balanced view? I think in the first place, you shouldn't pick this textbook. You should pick a, a better textbook. And second, from Ms. Reese, uh, I don't think she can use, uh, the author himself's defense to validate the book. Of course, the author would say, "Oh, of course, my book is good." And that you can't expect the author to give a neutral and biased opinion on his own book. I just think it's just common sense, no matter how, how well, you know, the letter was written by the author. And another thing I want to touch upon is, I think, um, Mr. McGillis owes, um, the public a formal official apology, um, in terms of swear words he spoke in last meeting. And this is the school district and then he has a, he is a board director. And we're here to educate our children. What kind of example is he setting for our children by speaking the swear words? Uh, I, I think this to the benefit of, of, benefit of himself and also to our district. That's all I wanted to say today. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who has pre-registered to speak? Okay. Next I have Jessica Bradbury.
Good evening, Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. Uh, first of all, congratulations to the music department on the educational award that was bestowed this year. Methacton has such a rich history celebrating music education, and I was happy to see such a great honor with this award. I'll respectfully ask again for the criteria that is being used to determine when we will restore the option of in-person meetings, with the hope that when we do return, we will still provide an option for live and remote participation for the public as a permanent option for board meetings. Thank you to the board and administration for having a discussion this evening about the AP History Book. I'm glad that we do have a thorough process that allows for so many levels of review. I'm hopeful and I have faith in our teaching staff that they will do their best to frame the materials so that they do provide for a healthy dialogue in an educational setting. Is it possible to share more details about the operational plans to reduce our legal fees? After the March- After the March meetings, the board had asked for a deeper dive into the legal fees and the right to know process. But this month, we were told that they needed more time to prepare this information. So I was wondering if we have a target for when that review may be taking place. Do we know how much legal fees have been incurred for the Shenondale case compared to the amount that we would receive if we won that case? Also, I'm wondering what is the source of the projection data in the full-day kindergarten presentation? Ignoring this current year enrollment, if we look at the figures from 2017 to 2020, the enrollment to at the K to four level has been mainly static, maybe a slight decline. So I'm interested to see where we obtained a projected increase of 200 students across those grade levels over the next three years. To date, we've discussed the return to school and athletics extensively, but we've overlooked clubs and other extracurricular activities. As we look to the future, have we started to plan for the fall yet to resume in-person clubs and other in-person after-school activities for those students? Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Lauren Algen.
Hi, good evening, Lauren Algen, Worcester. I just wanted to mention one item and, you know, please know it is not a criticism. I also I run a business where we do charitable donations, so I understand the challenges with fundraising. But I just wanted to mention the the Education Foundation's fundraiser for graduation. I think that it's been a hard year for everyone and all of our students, you know, deserve everything, of course. But I think that the fundraising situation for graduation, you know, it was it was tough to see because essentially, and maybe I misunderstood. So if I did, I do apologize. But it came across as that there were 16 suites available and there was a price tag for each of those. And, you know, unfortunately, not understood that only 16 can do that. But it's a really big price tag. And, you know, I know as a family of, you know, five children, I couldn't afford to spend $2,000 to sit in a suite. And I just think that in a year where we're trying to really drive home and make some some true changes about including everyone and having everyone feel like it's a level playing field. You know, I feel like that fundraiser really didn't take that direction because there are many people who certainly couldn't participate and everyone that is has a graduating senior wants, you know, the best for their family and their children. And I think that if if those fundraisers are gonna happen in the future, we could revisit them as, you know, perhaps they are, you know, rewards for maybe the student who had, you know, the most community service hours or made the biggest impact or, you know, buddy walks or anything like that to have all of the students able to have that opportunity. And I know, again, it's an unusual year with graduation. But I just felt like in a year where we're really trying to have a message of including everyone, that was really, you know, dividing because many people can't afford that price tag. So I just hope in the future that, you know, when we do have fundraisers like that for benefits, you know, they can be things that all families can participate in versus just those who can, you know, really afford it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Brian Earnshaw.
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. First, thank you to Ms. Reese and Mr. Winters for answering the questions I had during the public comment on board action items portion of the meeting. In addition, Dr. Zerbi and Hank Stattle and, you know, the additional information regarding SOAR. I really appreciate that. I do acknowledge that Ms. Reese, Mr. Winters and Dr. Zerby are Dr. Zerby are generally the only people on the board that reply to my email. So again, thank you for that. A couple of things regarding the presentations at the front of the meeting regarding full-day kindergarten. I'm wondering if the board has reviewed any or brought any studies to say stating why, you know, fully kindergarten may not beneficial with children. I know there are, I remember reviewing those a while back and I don't know if the rest of the board has seen those. Regarding the financials for the kindergarten, I think it's important to note that the the net new annual cost is a bit misleading. Full-day kindergarten is going to cost $1.3 million in addition to the current budget. It's just the fact that the SOAR program is providing savings as an offset. So if full-day kindergarten was not implemented and the SOAR program was, the district would have an opportunity to save $1.3 million in annual costs. And you could truly get to a 0% tax increase in a given year if you did not do full-day kindergarten. So showing 300,000 in net costs is is really, I don't think, appropriate. Again, regarding enrollment, I asked this question before, I believe at the Finance Committee meeting. You're probably at the point where your enrollment data, your enrollment study is stale. You should be looking at a new enrollment study before you start redistricting. I would think that was something to be important. And again, whenever I see this enrollment chart and building utilization, I have to point out that our COLA is less than 60% utilized and declining every year. Regarding the budget presentation, the slide on deferred or paid via committed funds was Slide 6 of the presentation. There's a lot of not really much showing here about operational changes that are those could be done to implement, you know, change to reduce or control expenses. It seems like the lowering of legal costs of 175,000 is a bit arbitrary. There's no plan on how to achieve that. I think the board should challenge that. And again, I don't think the budget's been reviewed in detail enough to identify all those potential cost-saving opportunities that might be out there. And regarding the open contracts, there's been no discussion of what the potential additional costs are once those items are settled. So if there is an increase in expenses, are they built into the budget? Is this could be unfavorable variance or are there cuts going to happen? Or are there just XX expenses in the budget to absorb those? So I think that's important to look at as well. Regarding the forecast presentation, I compared the forecast of revenue expenses to the January forecast to what's shown in the April forecast. Revenue did go up 700,000, which is great. I think the majority of that came from in the January forecast, as Dr. Zerby replied to my email, that it was unfavorable state revenue due to delayed payments from the state that are now coming in. So that was built into the forecast. What I don't understand is why expenses went up by 3.2 million from the January forecast to the April forecast. So that may be a good thing to look into. It was really, I don't understand legal expenses. As I pointed out earlier, it's 1.3% of the budget. And what I understand that the forecast is incomplete. So I would, I think it'd be good to ask Mr. Bricker to update his forecast for all those legal expenses that are going to be coming in. And again, what are the steps that are going to be taken to reduce those legal fees? Regarding the North Montco Tech Center lease in the budget, the 1.191 million, based on the response to the question I had, it sounds like that forecast expenditure is overstated. It doesn't include the state funding that's sort of committed. So again, that forecast should be updated for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. That's four minutes. Next I have Shannon Pepper.
Thank you, Shannon Pepper, Lower Providence. I wanted to start with a comment, just taking a step back and thanking the administration, the teachers, the board members, every single person that has been involved in this last year. It's an unprecedented time, and I know we've all heard that, but just the amount of effort that has gone in is just, I'm just so grateful as a parent in this district. Talking about a a history, an AP History textbook, just going back to some of the comments earlier. I think it's important to note that these kids are engaged. When they get to AP History, they want to be in that class. They want to engage with the text. They want to think outside of just history, you know, just dates and people and all of that. Mr. Winters made a comment earlier that I just loved about continuing, America continuing to try to be better and constantly reevaluating itself. And I think that's what an AP student can take with the emotional intelligence that comes from being a junior or senior in a class like that. I understand that there are going to be things that are questionable in any textbook. So I thank you for approving that one. I would like to read it myself. Taking a step back again, going to the Methacton Education Foundation and the fundraisers. I am the Vice President of the Methacton Education Foundation, and I just want to make a comment about some of the things that we fund. Thanks to the generosity of our community, both community members as parents, people in the community and businesses. We've been able to fund the Backpack Program. Quite amount, quite a large amount of money has helped with socially disadvantaged or economically disadvantaged students in our community. We've also funded the Maker Spaces in the libraries. We funded loner instruments for economically disadvantaged students who could not participate in the music program without the the assistance. And we're getting, we're really excited about the hydroponic farming and the forensics labs, as well as other things that we've done throughout the years. The engineering program is is another example. I could name so many things that our community has helped us to be able to fund. This fundraiser in particular is an option. As as we heard earlier, everyone gets eight tickets for graduation, which is quite a few more than I got when I was graduating high school. So that is wonderful. Everyone has that free, no, no question asked. I think for the convenience and comfort, some people can use those boxes if they would prefer to have that that option and they can afford to. It's for a good cause. It's so we can continue to support the things that the foundation is able to to support. That said, some of the people I spoke with were so grateful that they had the opportunity for family members with knee replacements, hip replacements, older people that are able to come but aren't comfortable sitting among everybody. It gives them that peace of mind. So I think it's a great fundraiser. I'm excited for the innovation of being able to do that, and I hope that people that can afford to can take advantage of it and enjoy it. But most of all, I'm excited that we can have the graduation at the at the field for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pepper. Next I have Mike Bryan.
Whenever you're ready. Everyone, Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. I just want to thank Mr. Summers because he saved about 30 seconds of my time in regards to the Supreme Court case. Some other things I wanted to put out there as a former school board member and someone who still stays heavily involved with PSBA. I received some information last week in regards to two bills on the Senate side that are in front of the State Government Committee. They were actually reviewed today, and I'm happy to report that they both successfully moved past the State Government Committee. And I just want to take a couple of quick minutes to talk about what they were. The first one is Senate Bill 312. This was sponsored by Senator Brooks, who's a Republican in Mercer County. This one was in regards to the right-to-know law, which would allow agencies such as school districts and local governments to charge reasonable fees, which can be assessed for the search review and compilation of records which are requested for commercial purposes. So I thought that this is a good one. As a school board member, we had seen a couple of people who were abusing the right-to-know request for commercial gains. And I think that that was a a big draw on district resources. The second one is Senate Bill 552, which deals with vexatious requesters. This is a sponsorship by a Republican in Jefferson County, Senator Dush. This would create a process by which agencies may petition the Office of Open Records for relief from a vexatious requester. You may be asking yourself what a vexation请求er is. Those are individuals who use the right-to-know law with malicious intent to intimidate, harass, or punish an agency, which results in bogging down the agency and wasting taxpayer resources. School districts and local governments have seen a small but steady increase in recent years, the number of individuals who are using the law on this matter. This was never anticipated by the General Assembly when the original statute was passed. While cases of vexatious requesters are not the norm, there are certainly individuals who have and continue to abuse loopholes and the right-to-know law to attack agencies and waste taxpayer resources. And the time has come to address this significant concern. I'd also like to read from Senator Dush's memorandum. I'll take two of the paragraphs here. Numerous entities such as state agencies, municipalities, school boards frequently report that they are overwhelmed by burdensome right-to-know law requests. While most of these requests come from valid requesters, some of these requesters have been identified as having vexatious intent with their requests. This issue is a top legislative priority of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, and Pennsylvania Municipal League, Pennsylvania State Association to Township Commissioners, the Pennsylvania State Association of Burrows, and the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, whose members regularly grapple with such requests on a regular basis. Please join me in sponsoring common sense legislation that will assist numerous entities by alleviating some of these burdensome vexatious requests that hinder our right-to-know request system, thus making it harder for the citizens of this Commonwealth to receive the information that they seek. So I just wanted to make sure to put that information out there to the school district in terms of there's, you know, a lot of talk about legal fees in districts, and I thought that that was important. Real quick, I also wanted to mention with PSBA, they released their 2021 State of Education Report. For any board member who hasn't seen it, please look it up on PSBA.org. It is a great report. Please beware, there is another report out there, which is not by PSBA. I don't know the individual or individuals who created it. I did check with PSBA. It was not theirs. They did not review it, and they do not stand by the information in there. Certain information has been manipulated. Data has been changed, so I just want to let the board aware of that, and that's my four minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Proof that board members never really go away. Next I have Ms. Herbison.
Hi, Peg Herbison, Lower Providence Township. A couple of things I just wanted to say, it's very exciting to see the progress that's being made toward inclusive practices. The inclusion presentations that were mentioned by Mr. Navarette and that were partly sponsored by the SCA are still available. The dashboard, the inclusion dashboard is accessible to our district indefinitely. So if anybody is interested in checking that out, you could contact me or Sandy Katz, and we would get you the information. I'm sure Susan Angstadt also has that. I would like to say I personally appreciate the virtual format of these meetings. It's made it much easier for me to attend and to listen in and get information in a timely manner. You know, sometimes I jump on late and I would probably never show up at school 20 minutes late for a meeting, but I certainly would jump on and and listen when I can. And I have definitely attended more meetings in the past year than I have in the years previous because it's so accessible. And lastly, I just really want to thank all of you for everything that you've done to help us get through. Sorry, I'll get a little emotional. How crazy this past year has been. And I'm sure that when you wrote rant for the school board that you did not expect to be making decisions that were truly life or death for staff, for students, for families. Sorry. And I just want you to know that some of us really appreciate it. We see the work that you've done and how hard it has been to just make find a balance between the safety and the educational needs of everyone in the district. And like I said, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and to let you know that your work has not gone unseen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herbison. Next I have Cara Colas.
Yes, I can. Look at that. All right. So I I just have two things. So one of the things that's interesting is I hear a lot of talk about ranking and and the school's position. And part of why my husband and I chose Methacton because of its standing and and part of why I was encouraged when my children were in the challenge and the advanced courses was because I wanted them to learn to think critically. And so part of that is all tied together, right? We should be helping all of our students to think more critically and censoring a text because it doesn't center on a particular group's political view or view in general isn't going to help our students get to that higher level. It isn't going to help them look at texts and come to their own conclusions. And I just wanted to speak that I respect the process. I respect the teachers who reviewed those texts and the fact that it has been going on a year and it was a group of teachers. It wasn't the board in a group with some agenda picking that. It was it was educators. Just, you know, speaks to me that the process is working and I greatly appreciate it. And then I also, I know you guys probably can't respond to this, but I am curious how many people are on these calls. I work for the largest defense contractor in the United States, and we have managed to operate quite successfully by Zoom and to get things done and to make major decisions by Zoom in large team meetings. And the school board is not putting F30 um, by Zoom in large team meetings. And the school board is not putting F-35s in the air. So I honestly think it's kind of disingenuous to make a big deal over it. I absolutely think that throughout this year and to when vaccinations get to a certain point makes perfect sense. And I think it makes the board um, calls more accessible for people. And part of government is accessibility. I mean, I think like four people came to the meetings before. Um, so you've had a much more diverse group of, of people and parents who lead busy lives. And, and I think this, that Zoom's not going away. And I just appreciate it. So, and I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colas. And next I have Julie Stern-Delfiner.
Um, hi, this is Julie Stern-Delfiner from uh, Lower Providence Township. I really just wanted to echo a lot of what has been said previously. Um, first, just an incredible appreciation for the board, the administration, our teachers and our students who have really um, done an amazing job over the past year under some really trying uh, circumstances. And it hasn't been easy for anybody. Um, and the incredible amount of hard work that everyone is putting in is really obvious. Our students who have been able to go back to school in person, I think are hopefully thriving there. And the students who, um, for a variety of reasons have chosen to stay at home, um, are, are doing well as, as well. And, and I think all of that, um, meeting our students' needs where they are has been really important. Um, I do also want to echo um, what was said earlier about the, uh, the debate that we've had this evening about the US history, uh, AP history class textbook choice for, for next year. Um, and I really applaud the process uh, that the, the teachers and the curriculum directors have gone through to choose this text and to allow our students to think critically and look at some really, really difficult um, times in our, uh, in our history, um, from a different viewpoint. And hopefully that will um, allow for some robust discussions in the classroom and some advancement in critical thinking um, as our young students become adults and need to use critical thinking throughout their lives. Um, and this is one way to be able to start that process, to continue that process um, and to really develop that process. And I applaud you all for, for making this choice. Um, and, uh, and finally, in terms of, um, you know, return to the classroom for next year and also in-person board meetings. Um, I agree with Cara. I have attended way more board meetings in the past year. Uh, and I was going to board meetings before this, um, but not with as much regularity as I have been able to this year. And I really appreciate being able to um, listen to board meetings for all of us, my, my son included, uh, while I'm cooking dinner oftentimes. Um, and that's certainly not something I could be doing if I was attending in person. Uh, so um, I, I appreciate this format and uh, we're all anxious to return to uh, a period of time that we consider normal, um, and seeing each other in person. But, but this has been, I think, one of the silver linings uh, in a, in a difficult year is improved and increased uh, community engagement. And I, I really applaud you all for working hard to make this so successful. So, thank you. It's been a long night. So have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Stern-Delfiner. All right, do we have anyone else who has pre-registered? For courtesy of the floor. All right, so with that, I will um, conclude courtesy of the floor. Um, and if the board has any closing remarks before we adjourn?
Just real quick, I wanted to address Ms. Nowden's um, concern about the suites. Um, I'm not sure, she might have not heard and, or that may not matter. She may still have that concern, which is, is her right. Um, that there were, is it two? I can't remember if it's two or four. But that there are some suites being raffled off so that there are uh, some people that will be able to enjoy them just from the luck of a raffle. So there was tried to make some balance there. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Anyone else for the good of the cause? Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, uh, there was a question regarding the presentation on legal expenses and that will be at Finance Committee next month.
Thank you. That's good to know. All right, anything else? Mr. McGinnis, motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Of course, there's a second. All right, everyone. Have a great night.